We've been called to order to meet in the Sanford City Commission of Monday, June 10, 2024. First order of business is legislative period by Reverend Eric Williams, a thing called Missionary Baptist Church, followed by probably 1035.
Good evening, everybody. Let's go before the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to your throne and grace at this time in the name of the Son of Jesus, giving you glory, giving you honor, giving you praise. Lord, I just first want to say thank you for everyone that's here tonight, Father God. Thank you for how you watched over us through this day's journey of life. And Lord, now as these meetings proceed, Father God, I thank you right now for your presence being here. Lord, I pray that everything that will be done tonight shall be done so decently and in order. I thank you, Father God, for these elected officials, Father God, that represent us here in the city of Sanford. Thank you for all, Father God, that in attendance tonight, Lord. I thank you for watching over them as we each travel back to our homes. I thank you that we'll arrive there safely. I thank you, Father God, that everything that will be done in this meeting tonight, Father God, will continue to further the development of the beautiful city of Sanford. I thank you for each department that's represented here, Father God, of which I'm an employee here in the city of Sanford, and it's an honor. I thank you for how you watch over us as we work diligently throughout the day, Lord, how you keep us safe, out of harm's way. I pray for the police department. I pray for the fire department. I pray for public works departments. I pray for every department that plays a part here in what goes on in the city of Sanford. Most importantly, Lord, I pray for the citizens. I pray for families that are represented here. I pray, Father God, that you continue to watch over us here in the city of Sanford. Thank you that we continue to grow together. We ask these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and the Republic of which is saying, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that.
We have a couple of presentations. My first is presentation of Florida Municipal Communications Association, Lord, to the city of Sanford and Lisa Holder.
Yeah. I've got like a small presentation to show. Well, I wanted to introduce me. I'm the chief communications and cultural affairs administrator for the city of Sanford. I wanted to share with everybody that I bring two awards back from the Florida League of Cities Florida Municipal Communicators Association, and it is a certificate of excellence in government communications. Chris?
You have the clicker right there.
Oh. So I just want to share real briefly what the Municipal Communications Association is. It was founded in 2018. The Florida Municipal Communicators Association is a professional network of individuals who provide communications leadership and support in Florida cities, towns, and villages. The FMCA offers communications professionals opportunities to learn, share, and develop their innovative solutions for the municipalities they serve. We sent out a press release the other day about achieving the government of excellence, certificate of excellence in government communications, and realizing and recognizing exemplary work by local government communications officers. And here's the certificate. It's over there as well, and I'm presenting that on behalf of the city of Sanford to ourselves, basically. So we had several checkboxes in order to receive a certificate of excellence. I wanted to share that with everybody. It's not just like they gave us an award. You have to have a verified social media account. We have several: Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. We have a mobile responsive website, stanfordfl.gov. And this goes for all of the citizens and residents in the audience, please. This is for your benefit as communications for the city of Sanford. Stanford Connects, we have a mobile app. It's a reporting app as well for all of our like potholes, sidewalk repairs, and streetlight outages, et cetera. We recommend that you download the Stanford Connects mobile app. It's a free app on your cell phone. They employ at least one full-time communications professional, and I'm speaking on behalf of Lisa Holder. There she is. We conduct an annual state of the city. We do that every year with the Chamber of Commerce here in Sanford. It reports about all the great accomplishments the city of Sanford does every year. We livestream the commission meetings. We also livestream our art and chambers events as well. We also do citizen outreach. Educational materials offered in more than one language. We do offer educational outreach materials in Spanish. We promote the Florida City Government Week, which happens in October, the third week in October. And what that is, is an initiative for city government to share what we do during that particular week with our schools, our community, and town halls, et cetera, promoting city government. We have an updated current media report and a reporter list, so we make sure that when we send our press releases out, we have an updated media list to get the word out to the traditional media agencies. We have an established brand guideline called Stanford Style, which shows us and several employees and our leadership how to use the city's brand, just like Burger King, Nike, you know, McDonald's has a brand. We have a brand as well, and that's the city of Sanford brand. And it's a marketing guidelines, and we have that available for the public and for the city. We have outreach programs to communicate information with our communities. For example, we have Citizens Academy, and we have Mayor's Youth Council. We're the only cities in Seminole County that has had a Citizens Academy and a youth council since going on approximately eight years now. We were the leader in both of those organizations, outreach programs. We have also now, I would like to share, in addition to the certificate of excellence, we have brought back two awards for the Florida Municipal Communication. And one of those were the Honorable Mention for Best Podcast Episode, Water Meter Replacement Project, Part One. So the city of Sanford has a podcast, and we have an award that we were presented, and this is a statewide award here. It is, everybody?
This is for you.
And also as well, which is, if you could listen to Stanford Says, please download the free City Podcast. You'll hear all this information. You don't just have to come to city commission meetings to hear city information. You could follow us all the time, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, basically. We won an award, Honorable Mention for the Best City Website, which is a huge accomplishment. And so we don't have our IT team here, but I wanted to share that with everybody. We have the city of Sanford Honorable Mention for Best City Website. And this is... This is, yeah, there's 412 cities in the state of Florida, and so to be recognized like this is pretty, we should pat ourselves on the back.
We got your best, 400 and...
Well, about 200 entries. I'm just saying there are 400, but there were 212 entries for these awards. And the city of Sanford was chosen as honorable mention. And so that just goes to show you all the work that's done behind the scenes. That website is hosted by WordPress and was done internally by staff in our IT department. And so that's our way of communicating to the world when we're not here. And so it's critical, and we're on the right track. And I'm proud to present these awards to you as the city's communications administrator.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All of this wouldn't be possible without purpose.
Thank you.
It's all right. It's okay.
We're going to have a word. We're doing the, we're going to do the WOW presentation. I could get Michael Bradley and...
And Rob. Everybody.
And Sabrina Benton.
All right. I want to read an email from Sabrina Benton, who is a former employee. Purpose of this email is to request that you acknowledge a job well done by one of your employees. I'd like to take this opportunity to commend one of your employees, Mr. Michael Bradley, on his observation and the handling of a dire situation. A couple of weeks ago, my mom was downtown Sanford on the lakefront. I think the sun and her illness had taken its toll on her. She had already called me to come and pick her up. Upon finding her sitting with her head downward, Mike noticed and asked her if she was feeling okay. And she answered him, "Not really." He asked if he could call someone for her. She informed him that she had already called me to come pick her up and that I was on the way. She told him that he would not leave. He informed her that he would not and that he would stay with her until someone arrived. I appreciate that he recognized the situation and acted accordingly. This world needs more people like him. I hope the city continues their program of recognizing employees and appreciate you would submit his name. And so on behalf of the city...
This WOW award.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. And Sabrina, thank you so much for taking the time to notice Mike and all he does for the city and taking that extra moment with your mom, who we hope is feeling much better now. Mike has been with us for a number of years, and we're lucky that he came home back to our department after going with police for a while. But Michael does an outstanding job with us, just for the city as a whole. You'll see him nights, weekends, until 2:00 AM downtown. He's out on the River Walk. He's downtown cleaning up and making sure everything is in great order after all of us have gone home. So, Michael, thank you so much for all you do. I couldn't be happier to be a part of you, the team that you're on. And I just want to say thank you again to Sabrina, and I know Benson and Robert feel the same, and I'm sure the commissioners as well.
Absolutely.
Mike, it's a humble name, a few words, but you guys are outstanding.
Do you want to, why don't you let, why don't you let, he wants Sabrina to get in there. There you go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Thanks. You sound terrific today.
I also have a proclamation on behalf of the Liz Bie and Guy family. On your behalf of the... All right. So whereas Almina Howard moved with her family to Sanford in 1907 at the age of four, where her father, D.A. Howard, worked in agriculture supply, selling fertilizer and supplies to farmers. And whereas in 1933, Almina Howard married Hamilton Bisbee after graduating from Queens College in Charlotte, North Carolina, she then taught at Seminole High School and Sanford Middle School for 35 years, teaching many subjects and many of Sanford's children, retiring in 1968. Whereas Almina and Hamilton Bisbee raised two children in Sanford, daughter Beatrice B.B. Bisbee Guy, who is here with us today, and son Hamilton M. Joseph Bisbee, who were raised on Bay Avenue, where Navy pilots used their house to line up on the runway. Whereas in 1973, Almina Howard Bisbee purchased land along Lakewood Road, believing that the drive along the lake from Interstate Four was a front door to Sanford, and she looked nice. Whereas B.B. Bisbee Guy and her family wish to donate the property to be preserved for future generations, and where this front door to be left as a natural legacy is Almina's desire. Whereas the city joins with the Bisbee and Guy families to honor B.B. as she celebrates her 90th birthday this year. And we have the city commission and the mayor on behalf of the residents of the city of Sanford wish to express their heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the significant land contribution, which provide green space, conservation area, and protection for the St. John's River Basin for future generations. Whereas the donated land located along Seminole Boulevard between the Preserve and the townhomes at Lakewood Road, and known as Bisbee Point, will now continue to preserve natural habitats, thus contributing to quality of life and the well-being of our citizens and Central Florida. Now therefore, I, Art Woodruff, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sanford, Florida, hereby proclaim that the city of Sanford extends its deepest thanks to the Bisbee and Guy families for their outstanding generosity and community spirit, and that a donated property by city commission action should be recognized as Bisbee Point in honor of this remarkable donation, and that a commemorative sign be installed at Bisbee Point to permanently acknowledge and celebrate the generosity of the Bisbee and Guy families. I would like to take an item out of order on the agenda. It is 8C. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission. The city received an offer about a month ago from its nearest gift, daughter of Beatrice Guy, to donate a piece of property to the city for conservation. The parcels are approximately nine acres in size and generally located near Lakewood Road between the townhomes of Lakewood Road through the Preserve subdivision. It's the city staff recommendation. The city commission approved the resident motion of 1230 to 47, which accepts the donation of the land.
Will it be approved?
It's motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't mind.
Any opposed? Pass to the next. Thank you. Also, one, the back table is sort of a more extended history of the Bisbee family in Sanford. If anyone would like to pick up a copy, we have some extra copies for the family.
And your picture?
Oh, and here's a mock-up of the sign.
Oh.
How old is he?
Eleven months.
Oh.
Thanks.
Thanks, B.B.
He's tired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of your parents.
I just want to say thank you very much to Sanford. Sanford is one of my most favorite towns in the United States. I just, I have such a long history with Sanford. And Alina Bisbee, she taught for years here, and she too truly loved Sanford. And I just look at it, and she passed on down to me. And I do, I love Sanford, more than any of you can think. I do. So great. And it's so nice to be here. I honor me and my family. So I just say that I did it, everyone, in this audience, that has come, have come to see who in the world is B.B. Bisbee. So I just wanted to let you know that I personally love it that she came, and that it's, it's just such a nice honor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many Bisbys still live in Sanford?
In the area, in Orlando, almost everybody.
Good. Great. Good to know. The rest of us are in Jacksonville.
Oh. Wonderful. Safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking before the commission to facilitate public input, if you plan on speaking on an item, we would ask that you complete one of the citizens' input forms, which are found by the back door and on the side. Also ask that you state your name and address for the record in speaking. Public will begin an opportunity to speak on any item before the city commission during the regular meeting. Before the consent agenda, I will ask anyone who wishes to speak on any of those items during public hearings, if they gain an opportunity to speak on each of those. If you are in regular items, if you would like to comment, if you have not turned in the yellow card, just raise your hand when we get to that item and it will be recognized. So three-minute time limit for each figure, for each item, except for persons who are in an org, an organization, and present in a dispute or in a quasi-judicial hearing. Citizen participation at the end of the meeting, individuals may address the commission on any topic. And there is a five-minute time limit for those comments.
That brings us to the minutes of the May 13, 2024, work session, regular meeting.
Will it be approved?
Second.
And a motion and second for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass to the next.
Does anyone on the audience wish to speak to any item on the consent agenda? I think the consent agenda to the commission, item A3L.
Will it be approved?
Second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
That on the table?
It's not an item to consent.
I thought it was. Then. Okay. That was labeled in. Yeah. Okay. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During this public hearing, if you turn the third time, I'll read the statement once tonight. With regard to agenda items involving the quasi judicial process, commissioners must disclose all expert communications, including the name of communicator and the time and place and substance of communication. Written communications must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Commissioners' investigations, site visits, and receipt of expert opinions must also be disclosed, disclosed and made part of the record. Persons who have opinions contrary to those expressed in an expert communication may refute or respond to the communication at the hearing when they make the presentation. Parties to this proceeding are the city staff and the applicant, and they are subject to confirmation and must give their testimony under oath. Others' party status are also subject to cross-examination. Persons who are only participating by providing comments are not subject to cross-examination and are not sworn in as evidentiary witnesses. The qualifications of the city staff are part of the general materials. All testimony and evidence provided to the city commission must be competent, material, and substantial under Florida law. A guide to quasi judicial proceedings has been published on the city's website, and copies are available on the table at the back of the room where the speaker requests for it. That brings us to second reading of ordinance 4778. Mr. Colber.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, implementing the state's statutory mandate to prepare business and tax estimates prior to the adoption of the code of proposed ordinances pursuant to section 660414 Florida statutes, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implemented administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for conflict, providing for solvency, providing for qualification, correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for effective business.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, beginning on October 1 of 2023, as a result of the enactment of the state statutes, the city of Sanford administratively implemented the law for the desire to enact a legislative requirement to do so to ensure compliance with the statutes and federal jurisdictions. The city's staff's recommendations, city commission adopt ordinance number 4778, annexing the property as being described into the city of Sanford. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing?
Will it be approved?
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the next. This is the second reading of ordinance 4780.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexing a voluntary petition, certain real property, generally addressed as 1695 Alexander Avenue, as it is contiguous. City of Sanford, in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of section 171, 1044 Florida statutes, providing the boundary of the city of Sanford, the included property, amending the boundary of the city in accordance with the provisions of section 166031 Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions, right to city clerk through the court of the ordinance, clerk of the circuit court, and chief administrative office of Seminole County, the department of state, providing for labor description of that, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, reviewing all ordinances in conflict field, providing for solvency, providing non-qualification, taking administrative actions, and providing for effective business.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff have reviewed the request for an exception and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. It is therefore the city staff's recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number 4780, annexing the property as being described into the city of Sanford. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing?
Will it be approved?
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the next. This is the second reading of ordinance 4789.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexing a voluntary petition, certain real property, generally addressed as 1695 Alexander Avenue, as it is contiguous. City of Sanford, in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of section 171, 1044 Florida statutes, providing the boundary of the city of Sanford, the included property, amending the boundary of the city in accordance with the provisions of section 166031 Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions, right to city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, and the chief administrative office of Seminole County, the department of state, providing for labor description of that, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, reviewing all ordinances in conflict field, providing for solvency, providing non-qualification, taking administrative actions, and providing for effective business.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff have reviewed the request for an exception and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. It is therefore the city staff's recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number 4779, annexing the property as being described into the city of Sanford. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing?
Will it be approved?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the next. This is the second reading of ordinance 4780.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexing a voluntary petition, certain real property, generally addressed as 1695 Alexander Avenue, as it is contiguous. City of Sanford, in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of section 171, 1044 Florida statutes, providing the boundary of the city of Sanford, the included property, amending the boundary of the city in accordance with the provisions of section 166031 Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions, right to city clerk through the court of the ordinance, clerk of the circuit court, and chief administrative office of Seminole County, the department of state, providing for labor description of that, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, reviewing all ordinances in conflict field, providing for solvency, providing non-qualification, taking administrative actions, and providing for effective business.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff have reviewed the request for an exception and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. It is therefore a staff's recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number 4780, annexing the property as being described into the city of Sanford. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing?
Will it be approved?
Second. And a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass to the next.
Mr. Mayor, I look at the point that we all have the rules we've done, so if you hear sounds, that's what it is.
Second reading of ordinance 4781. Mr. Colber.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, amending the city of Sanford comprehensive plan as previously amended, providing for amendment of future land use map, future land use element of the city of Sanford comprehensive plan, relative to certain real property approximately 0.71 acres in size on the habitat for humanity of Seminole County and greater Apaca, said property being addressed as 1695 Alexander Avenue, providing for future land use designation to be... Alexander Avenue, providing for future land use designation to be amended from Seminole County low-density residential to city low-density residential single-family, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for assignment of the land use designation for the property, providing for severability, providing for ratification prior acts of the city, providing for complex, providing for qualification, directions to the current codifier, and providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff have found that the proposed small-scale land use amendment appropriate and suitable for the subject site and comparable with the surrounding land uses inconsistent with the city's competements of plan and chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statute. It is therefore the city staff recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number forty-seven eighty-one.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Anyone who wants to close the public hearing?
Moved to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. We're very anxious on the motions this evening. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. Second reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-two. Mr. Colbert.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, allowing to resone certain real property, approximately zero point seven one acres in size owned by Habitat for Humanity, Seminole County, and greater Apaca, Florida. Property is located within the city limits of Sanford, addressed as sixteen ninety-five Alexander Avenue, from Seminole County single-family dwelling to single-family residential, providing for findings and intent, providing for taking the event, implementing administrative actions, providing for the adoption of the map by reference, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for non-qualification, providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff find the proposed rezoning ordinance to be appropriate and suitable for the subject site and comparable with the surrounding land uses. It is therefore the staff's recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number eighty-four forty-seven eighty-two.
This is a quasi judicial. I have met with the applicant, um, to talk about their plans in June about two months
I have had no communication?
None.
What happened?
This is, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Anyone who wants to close the public hearing? Bring in commission for action.
Moved to approve.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. Here's us to ordinance, second reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-three. Mr. Colbert.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexing non-voluntary petition certain real property generally addressed as thirty-seven fifty Laura Avenue of twenty-eight fifty East Lake Maryville, Florida. Related contiguous to the city of Sanford in accordance with the voluntary accession provisions of section one seven one, one oh four four Florida statutes, redefining the boundary to the city of Sanford to include said property, amending the boundary to the city according to provisions of section one sixty-six oh three one Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions, right to city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk's circuit court, and chief administrative office of Seminole County within part of the state, providing for labor description of that, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for non-qualification, taking administrative actions, and providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city staff have reviewed the request for an exception and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. It is therefore the city staff recommendation, city commission adopt ordinance number forty-seven eighty-three, and legally, and annex the property as legally described into the city of Sanford.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Anyone who wants to close the public hearing? Bring in commission for action.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. Second reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-four. Mr. Colbert.
Ordinance of the city of Sanford, Florida, amending the city of Sanford comprehensive plan as previously amended, providing for amendment of future land use map of the future land use element of the city of Sanford comprehensive plan relative to certain property, two point nine six acres in size owned by SFD Air Park, L O C, said property being addressed as thirty-seven fifty Laura Avenue of twenty-eight fifty East Lake Maryville, Florida, for the future land use designation to be inherited from Seminole County industrial, the city airport industry and commerce, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for assignment of the land use designation for property, providing for severability, providing for ratification prior acts of the city, providing for complex, providing for qualification, direction to the code codifier, and providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, at the May second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, the city's planning of zoning commission voted to recommend that the city of Sanford, the city commission approved the request that land of future land use should be adjusted to airport industry. The airport city staff recommendation, the city commission adopt ordinance number forty-seven eighty-four.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Anyone who wants to close the public hearing? Bring in commission for action.
Moved to approve.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. Here's us to the second reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-five.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, implementing the provisions of recent passed House Bill number thirteen sixty-five, which enacted section one twenty-five point zero two thirty-one Florida statutes preparing for public camping sleeping on any public property, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, amending section sixty-three seventy-two and section sixty-three seventy-eight of the city code, providing for penalties, providing for savings provision, providing for conflict, providing for qualification, correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, the Florida legislature recently passed House Bill thirteen sixty-five, which makes it unlawful for county municipalities to authorize or otherwise allow any person to regularly engage in public camping or speaking on any public property. It is therefore the city staff's recommendation that the city commission adopt ordinance number forty-seven eighty-five.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item?
Hi, my name is Nancy Briggs. I'm at one of seven south of the campus in Florida. So my question is to the commission, if you adopt this, what's your plan to enforce it? Like, what are we going to do? Are we going to arrest these people? And we pay for them to go to jail and all that, and it comes back costs for us? And really? What's the point?
It's not our desire to arrest people, um, but we will follow the state law. My partner didn't want to take that to that.
Well, again, this will take, you bring up good points, and it's something that's gone through not just the city of Sanford, but the entire country. Uh, there's a real challenge in how to best people experiencing homelessness. The Florida state legislature has passed laws, and we must follow them.
So, so here's what I, because I'm still having a hard time really getting around this. And so here's, here's what I'm not understanding. This, this ordinance is to bring us into compliance with the current state law. Well, if the state law is the state law, why do we even need this ordinance? So I, this really needs more explanation for me. I'm, this one has me.
A couple of points, Commissioner. The, one, uh, it is a state law, and we do have to follow it by passing an ordinance for cleaning out our code if there are any conflicts we're going to cope with. Also, this state law is under challenge already in the courts, and there's a provision in this ordinance that if the challenge by whoever has filed it is successful, that this ordinance will be repealed automatically, so that we are still in compliance with the state law. We're, we're trying to be in compliance and not out of compliance with the state regulation.
The mayor, last, I guess it was last year, we passed an ordinance defining what camping was.
Right.
And then the state passed a, a law that required us to change ours a little bit.
So I thought also this ordinance was going to help us be able, if Seminole County, if Seminole County intended to designate this property within the city limits of Sanford, that it would allow us to be able to deny them that, that right to do so.
That's part of the state law.
That is a part of the state law. And if the county does decide, and it has the, the power to make a decision to locate a place somewhere within the county, if they chose to do what they have the power to do, and they wanted to locate it in the city, the city has the power to, to block that and require it to be somewhere else. But that's part of the state law.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert.
Anything else? Did the public think so? Is there anyone else on the audience who wishes to speak? Please, a public hearing. Bring in commission for action.
Moved to approve. Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. To... The approval of the extension of plan development order twenty-one oh eight.
The city staff received a request for a planned development order relating to real property assigned with planning development zoning district classification, known as O M B S and P D. And they had received it in all property owners, Palmetto Property Partners, the equity director of Robert Miller and Robert and Waters. Uh, there was a campening in the city staff's recommendation that the city commission approved the extension of the plan development, the rezoned development order for P D, Plan Development twenty-two forty-seven Market Avenue for Waters and Associates, an additional three years.
This is a quasi judicial. Anyone has anything to differ? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Close the public hearing. Bring in commission for action.
Moved to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question answered. Here's the first reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-six.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, amending the city of Sanford comprehensive plan as previously amended, providing for amendment of the future land use map of the future land use element of the city of Sanford comprehensive plan relative to certain real property, fourteen point one nine acres in size owned by the city of Sanford. Said property being addressed as four oh nine Plaza Drive, providing for future land use designation to be amended from low-density residential to high-density residential, providing for legislative finding and intent, providing for assignment of the land use designation for the property, providing for severability, providing for ratification prior acts of the city, providing for conflicts, providing for qualification, directions to the code codifier, and providing for effective review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, on June the sixth of twenty twenty-four, the city's planning rezoning commission is scheduled to review the request and to make the recommendations to the city commission. It is the city staff's recommendation, and city commission approved, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment as the city finds, city staff finds a small-scale land use designation appropriate and suitable for the subject site.
And this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item?
I will close the public hearing. I've got some questions about this one, though. So, why, if we're planning on being a single family, are we changing it to a high-density residential? And, Mr. Colbert, if the census is going to come down, do I need to go ahead and swear her in?
If she's, if she's merely answering a question that the commission has, she would not need to be sworn. But it is a quasi judicial hearing, and if she's going to give testimony, the expert testimony, she should be sworn.
So Billy, since this is...
This one's quite just like it.
It says, this is, this is not a quasi judicial matter.
I'm sorry, I'm on the, I'm...
Right, the next one's quasi judicial. I, I open that up.
She doesn't need to swear in there. At all.
Okay. So, why?
For the formality, the, 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 planning director. Um, okay, so if you remember earlier this year, we did a annual ordinance that we do to update properties that are inconsistent with the land use, and there's only, this was one of them, to make it consistent with its surroundings on it, because we're going to make it MR, I, we're going to turn it to MR three and H E R, because that's what the other properties were, had a P C O and map, I don't know, for such a map. But, um, to be consistent with those around it and to be consistent with the zones that are on top of it, it needs to be H E R.
Okay, but, but we intend to, for it to be a single-family...
Correct.
Develop.
Right, but to put a single-family zoning, it would be spot flooded in the middle of what, what's surrounding it as a whole family. Also, the density that's allowed on the single-family, the placid woods, subdivision that's adjacent to it have forty-foot lots, and that gets close to the density maximum on the L V R S F. So to be consistent with the adjacent and allow the opportunity for the adjacent property to be consistent with the redevelopment. It also could open the opportunity for townhomes to show that needs to be developed in that all that property. But it's not an inconsistent use to go low-density, single-family, um, it's just not consistent with what's around it.
So the single-family next to it...
Correct. It's a higher density.
It's a higher density.
Because of the forty-foot lot.
Right.
And, and this brings up an important question, and why am I using this island? Um, I was actually back in that neighborhood, um, last, just a couple of days ago, Saturday, um, uh, to talk to a couple of residents. And that neighborhood does have a forty-foot front, and the houses are right on top of each other with the five-foot setbacks. And, and thanks to that, I, I believe, and I always believe, that neighborhood is not in great condition. That neighborhood, there are some homes that are, are kept out. The majority of them are not. Um, and, um, that neighborhood's not look good at all. And I just, I, so, so I don't understand why we were going to zone to be compatible with that. We found that these forty-foot lots don't work. We found that these five-foot setbacks create a, a nightmare. People are on top of each other. Why do we want to, why do we want a zone to be compatible with something we know doesn't work well?
I guess, the, the easiest way to put it is the land use and zoning around it are either N B R or H E R. So, short of rezoning math amounts and land uses, the, in order to prevent spot zoning, we can't put an O B R S F. It's not N B R, but it, you know, becomes inconsistent with that, which is already constructed.
Okay, but it's, it's currently N B R, right?
Part of it. If you look at the math, we're trying to clean it up because it's half and half. It's going to be, it's all under one ownership, and it's half and half. So we need to have one or the other. Since the majority of the property is at higher density, we're going to take the secondary one and maybe get the same. The land use, I think this is the zoning map, if you want to read it, but, um, the land use and the zoning are incompatible in this format.
Okay, because I'm looking in our agenda at the current future land use, and the whole parcel is orange.
Right, and the zoning is...
To match the piece underneath it.
The zoning and the land use don't match. So the zoning is currently higher density than the land use allows. So we either downzone what's there, or we bring the land use of what is existing next to it up to, to match it.
So I guess, why are we...
It's truly a clean match.
Why are we matching it to placid woods rather than to the, I guess that's vacant land or anything?
Correct, and saken land. So, I mean, if that's the direction of the mission, we could go that direction. Right now, the zoning and the land use are incompatible on the larger piece. And then the secondary piece, if they become one parcel, we don't do dual zoning, four dual land use under one parcel. So we have to have one or the other.
And you're saying the one piece that's, that's own half and half is owned by one person?
No, there's, currently it's two parcels, but it's all owned by one, yes.
It is two parcels, so.
Yeah.
Yes, owned by us.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, so there's nothing that's forcing us to, to, to go high density there, right? So, so, so there's nothing that's forcing us to go high density there, I, I just don't understand. To me, if we've done it high density, we also open up the, we open up the possibility of... Some density of possibility anymore. Apartments, that opens up...
It does allow for apartments. There's nothing to say that apartments wouldn't necessarily be compatible behind a cemetery and adjacent to some of the higher density residential. The interest is to pursue either single family or a higher density townhome.
Well, and we know that we need single families, and we know that we want single family. I just don't wanna go high density there.
In terms of designing and what could be built, what's the difference between the medium density and the high density?
Fifteen, well, maybe thirty-five and twenty, well, maybe thirty-five.
So, if we're medium density, we probably can't do forty foot lots, we'd have to do...
No, you could do forty. I mean, you're, you're just barely over it. Typically, if a forty foot lot, if they do a, you know, fairly dense water water, you might hit six to eight on a forty foot lot. But we can do it under six, most of our ones on Lake Mary, it gets tight, it gets hard to, and then townhomes really just don't, you can't have townhomes in the L B R S F. So townhomes aren't a bad fit in terms of, they are single family, but they are attached, they're pre-simble, they're ownership only, and it gives a little variety of housing stock to not only be single family homes that are detached. I mean, there is a market for townhomes right now, we have several that are under construction as well. It's sort of the, the in-between between the detached single family and the multi-family apartments. So if the commission wants to officiate to N B R, we have to do N B R fifteen on both parcels, which one has, and they're the, actually, they're both currently N B R fifteen. Those parcels we have to rezonate, so if we do that.
I don't want another subdivision that, like, what is, what is over there? I don't think that that is, that is not aged well, it hasn't worn well, it hasn't gone well. It, I'm telling you, when I was over there this, this past week, there's, there's not enough parking, so the streets on both sides are packed with cars, the driveways are packed with cars, people are on top of each other, forty foot frontage.
That's an element of design, though, so our minimums are not forty. That would have to be either approved through commission use and urban infill and preliminary subdivision plan before both this commission and the planning and zoning commission, or through a plan development rezon, if an applicant wanted to come back for a forty, that...
Well, I said, that, that development came along way before I did, so I don't, I don't know the history of it.
Yeah.
But I do know, I do know that it's, it, it is not, it is not maintained, it is not, it is...
It was one of our first P forty foot lot subdivisions. We now have a number more, obviously, that we've done on the southeast side of town. That one right there was done through public hearings to get those reduced lot sizes. Nothing says that the lot sizes have to be reduced to forty feet. It's just, the access to this new property is through a subdivision of forty foot lots. So, you're not likely to get hundred foot lots to drive through a forty foot lot neighborhood.
Of course not.
Right. So townhomes may be a natural transition to go from something that's a higher density single family to townhomes or a single family subdivision with either similar or slightly larger lots, but you're not gonna get a state sized lots if you have to go through a forty foot lot subdivision to get there.
Well, and I'm not expecting that, but...
Right. Just from the planning perspective, it either has to be one or the other, 'cause we can't have dual zoning or dual land use on a single development.
You know, the city owns this property, maybe the thing to do is not to sell it for development, but to think about making a park out of it, or doing, doing something that'll benefit that whole area. That area needs benefiting, that whole area does. And maybe we need to look at something that'll benefit everybody out there rather than selling it and trying to, you know, trying to puzzle, you know, put together, put together a fit for it that we already know is probably not gonna make it a lot better there. If it backs right up to placid woods, maybe that's what we need to be looking at.
That's a decision that's outside of planning.
Don't hear anything from my fellow commissioners. Have you all been out there lately?
No, I haven't, I agree with what you're saying, but I think basically what you're saying is we need to clean up.
One way or the other.
One way or the other, we need to clean it up.
And it's very distracting. Can you stop these from beeping?
Yeah.
Um, well, there's a couple things. We have looked at different options of that property over the years. It's not viable for, for a park. It's not viable for a walk through, it's like, we want to do a walk through. If we open it up to commercial, that gets tricky.
Yeah, access to it is through a residential subdivision, so it's only real development possibility.
We do have an offer for the property, am I allowed to say that?
Do it now.
We have an offer for the property, they approached us.
Interested parties?
Yeah, there is a party.
Yeah, there's interest, I don't know that it...
That's what brought the awareness of this issue to the, to the staff.
That, yeah, that we realized that it had this, well, part of the property actually went on the earlier, the earlier change this year. The second follow-on was not right, was not brought to... Yes, it was a part of it, yeah.
It, well, it's fourteen acres, that is a little bit landlocked. Doesn't give a lot of access to info and quote, for, for doing anything large scale, which it would be. So we've been kicking this around for years, and I'm, I'm of the mindset, and I'm just one person up here, the city owns a lot of property that they should not own, and they need to get rid of it. Some of it they should, and some of it they should preserve, others of it, not so much. This, this parcel has caused us a lot of problems over the years, and it's an I S O. And so, you know, the potential to get rid of it and, and do something with it is just there.
To create housing for the city, it's, you know, it's not a bad option for property, especially if...
It's been burnt down over the years by homeless camps. There's, there's all kinds of drug use and nonsense that goes on out there at night, 'cause it's, it's a hiding place.
It is, it is, that's all true.
It's on the backside of a cemetery where a lot of shitting against happened.
We just don't want it held wrong and for that to get worse instead of better, and there's always that possibility.
Which, which sort brings me back to, why is making it all high density better than making it all medium density?
No, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a, a problem with that question, 'cause I, I thought it was not weird too. But knowing the history, I thought I would share it. I don't understand why we're gonna do that. That's partly because, as I think says, the location and the property run.
It'll be, it'll end at fourteen acres, it'll end up being in an apartment complex.
And the apartment, some people wanna be that far off the road, they want visibility. So what, what you're looking at is either a single family or a townhome. Because commercial, you can't get to it unless you drive through the subdivision. It's gonna be essentially, if you look at it, an extension of that with different houses.
The way the placid wood looks right now, I don't know how they're gonna do anything that they're behind it, I, I just, I just...
And like I said, that's a matter of design, so anything that doesn't meet our minimum standards for, in this case, M R three zoning, would require public hearings to modify. And at that point, would be the opportunity to make sure that those standards meet the quality of development that we've been trying to obtain in recent years.
This one, you need to raise your hands.
When we did the original placid woods, there weren't all the requirements for amenities, the open space, the smaller lots, we have requirements for more open space. All of those elements were not requirements back then, and they are now.
And N B R allows for, for townhomes?
Yes. The N B R and the M R two, as well as the H E R and the M R three, will allow for them. If there were an instance that tripped the N B R fifteen, I mean, fifteen dwellings per acre is a lot, most of our apartment complexes run between twelve and fourteen, even on the four story ones, so...
So, at medium density residential, we could still get something that would be equivalent to placid woods with our new, um, design standards.
But we don't want equivalent, we want better.
I understand that, but I...
Lot sizes, maybe we'd be lot sizes with very amenities, or we could require on-street parking or additional parking areas, all of those things that we require now.
Right. So I just don't see the benefit of going to, to the higher density. Unless, and I haven't heard anyone say there's a reason to do that other than...
Just for compatibility and consistency. It's a natural progression through the townhomes, I mean, through the single family that's already there into the same zoning with the different subdivisions.
Okay, I just need clarification, I thought that this was to rezone the three acres, not the...
It is.
The larger proportion.
Well, we're not to the rezon yet, we're doing the land use.
Okay.
So the land use on both parcels right now is N B R fifteen. So you would just not change the...
We wouldn't change that.
Then we would have to present a new ordinance to the larger piece to go back to the M R two that... I don't remember what it was when we changed it earlier this year, but it would have to go to M R two to be consistent with the other one.
Medium.
I mean, I haven't heard you say anything that, that tells me that we shouldn't do that.
The likelihood of getting something so dense that exceeds fifteen dwellings per acre, this far off on the road, I, I honestly don't know how we can do that.
Let's not open ourselves up to that.
Okay, then we need to, I guess, and legally on the next one, which is a quasi judicial one, but I'm gonna ask you, Colbert, we would have to redraw it, resemit it, and start it over to rezon to M R two, or can we proceed to...
Both a different parcel.
Yes, totally different parcel, so we would have to re-effort us to do that one.
And get it started, I guess.
Yep. Just thinking that one. So, yeah, we would have to come back to you, first with planning and zoning commission, and then to you to go to M R two.
Oh, you're on to it, I mean, that's, I understand we're making it more work, but that makes more sense to me.
Well, it benefits the area in the future, so.
Then, we made a motion to...
Do not.
Do not, right? Still in public hearing, thank you. It says a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to the side?
Good evening, Callan McGee, two one two seven West Twenty-Fifth Street. I was hired on, there you go on the screen to display the parcels to the north. That's my primary homestead residence, twenty-one twenty-seven.
Where exactly, Tom?
Right here.
Where is it?
Down.
Right there, okay.
And to the left of that is also my family's property, twenty-one thirty-nine. We request that, as part of any developer's agreement, with whoever ultimately develops the subject parcel, there would be granted ingress egress from that side, instead of having lots on Twenty-Fifth Street, there's been, uh, multiple collisions there, one involving my daughter, uh, and it's with the posted speed on A T Thomas Junior, Twenty-Fifth Street, it's very difficult to get in and out of there. We request that any developer's agreement with the developer, the subject parcel, include ingress egress to those two parcels, twenty-one twenty-seven with Twenty-Fifth, twenty-one thirty-nine with Twenty-Fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak to the side? And I will close the public hearing, bring in the commission for action, which I believe is to deny the...
So, I'll move to deny for the ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four eighty-seven eighty-six. Forty-seven.
Forty-seven eighty-six.
Oh my goodness, thank you, Sheena, forty-seven eighty-six. No, I say it.
And I would just say, I agree with the mention of Austin, that opening that whole property apart is not a viable option to be believed, but when we go to positive selling and developing that, we might want to look at a next major apartment space. Or as part of our agreement, they would provide, and it would...
Well, it's a part of our statement, is it?
Well, yeah, a little bit, well, this would be a little more, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass and answer. So, what do we do with forty-seven eighty-seven, Mr. Colbert?
You deny it, because if, if you're not passing the prior ordinance, then the zoning would be in conflict with the complex.
Okay, you want your call for public comment?
I would get public comment, I don't think I need to read it.
Okay, so ordinance forty-seven eighty-seven is to rezone the three acres that we did not just change the future land use on, so we will not be able to do that rezoning. But if anyone wishes to speak to that item, it's a public hearing. Anyone, I'll close the public hearing, bring in the commission for motion to the panel.
Move to deny.
Second.
Forty-seven eighty-seven, second.
Any motion, a second, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass and answer.
I understand this consideration appears in my honor to write the document.
As this is the mayor and the city commission, cities received an appeal of the mail of the development order issued by city official officer, Ivan Henson, the planning director, and it's been filed by attorney John Folsby, representing the developer, the app, the Sanford Water Cup Partners. It is the city staff's recommendation that the city commission uphold the renewal of the official officer.
This is my first time doing this, so I always try to make sure I do it right. Anyone who is going to be a party in this action and provide testimony, I need to swear in. Those are two drives. Right, and if you shake your hand.
Richard Heisenfeld.
Anybody else to the meeting? Okay, do you swear or harm that the testimony that you're about to give in matters now, that hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Right, attention. The process here will be staff, and then the applicant, and then the public comment, and then, and we'll have a staff for what I mean.
Okay, as you've noted, I'm a planning director. As you've noted before you, it is the appeal by Sanford Water Cup Partners of the development order that was issued by planning department on the golden plan, and cyclones submitted by the applicant. I also was informed that additional cyclones were provided to you on the diets. Hopefully, tonight's presentation will address the comments. So, we can start with the federal site, heritage park, also no match, subject to statutory development agreement enacted by ordinance...
Hold on just a second, please, as we find the documents.
It was a digital site, but I believe that was provided to... I love, did you bring my background?
There again, hold the court, please, try to, your voice needs to be within four to six inches of that mic. Please.
All right, which mic?
This one.
We have three others. Just one right there.
This one.
You can aim two towards you. I think just to go, is this the site plan that you reviewed? Or is this the...
That. Site plan was provided by the applicant as additional information.
Okay. All right, everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So the catalyst site, also known as Heritage Park, is subject to statutory development agreement enacted by ordinance twenty-seventeen forty-four oh three. It's recorded in the public records at book eighty-nine nineteen, page four thirty-seven through five seventy-four, San Diego County Public Records. The development agreement is both the zoning of the city-owned property that established the development standards and the requirements, and it's a business deal between the city and SWP to implement the development authorized by the development agreement, which is structured and intended to fulfill a public purpose and result in a public benefit. So the development plan application and submittal. So in twenty-twenty-three, SWP submitted a set of plans, which is attached to your staff report at the end, and it's identified as a schematic design and site plan. It includes graphic depictions, not the line, graphic depictions and line drawings of the proposed development, not civil drawings as required for a development plan review. The applicant has been advised that the schematic design has been found and determined by staff to not meet the submittal requirements for the development plan review process. And as noted, both the plans and the comments from staff are provided as part of your staff report. A development plan approval yields a site development permit for construction, which cannot be accomplished without the developer submitting the appropriate civil drawings to the city. So the development plan application and submittal, the applicant refers to a letter of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and a site plan, as a site plan approval from Ms. Danny King and several appeal points. If the letter were a site plan approval, it would have been in the form of a development order. The necessary civil engineering plans should have been submitted following that approval if the applicant had had that as the approval.
Ali, one more time, say that again.
Okay. The applicant refers to a letter of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty, as a site plan approval from Ms. Danny King and several points throughout the appeal. Says if the letter were a site plan approval, it would have been in the form of a development order. And the necessary civil engineering plans should have been submitted immediately following that approval. Four years later, a complete set of civil drawings has not yet been received. So this has deprived the city staff the opportunity to enable SWP to proceed to construction in a timely fashion. City staff does stand ready to expedite your review of civil drawings. Other notes that we wanted to just make sure were presented to you is that citywide, various apartment complexes and mixed-use projects have been submitted, approved, and commenced and even completed construction in the timeframe since this original approval. So one other point of comparison is that the city regularly approves plan development rezones and plan development development orders that come with a three-year expiration to allow applicants through infrastructure completion. Many of the PDs that we have been approved since twenty-seventeen have met this requirement. So they submit for application, they get approval, they construct, and they get COs. And we've had a number of them go through the process since twenty-seventeen. So the submittal review, city staff has been tasked with ensuring adherence to the SWP, by SWP to the quality level of development and the overall development set forth in the master plan as a development agreement. After most recent comments were received by SWP, a meeting was requested with staff, which was promptly scheduled. And a consistent comment at that meeting was the need for a site plan comparison to approved master plan to assess the changes made by SWP to ascertain compliance with the development agreement. So the following site plan comparison to the proposed master plan was provided by the applicant. This is the side-by-side comparison that we have provided regarding the master plan layout from August of seventeen to the proposed site plan layout from October twenty-three. So the development agreement within has a section on uses. Section three point two states that the uses on the property shall be in substantial conformance with those outlined in the master plan, strict compliance with the city's comprehensive plan, and in conformity with the land development code, regulations, and so on. Section four point six speaks to the changing of uses. Says the city and the developer acknowledge that market conditions may change over time, and therefore changes to the master plan may be necessary to ensure the project's financial profitability and success. The city manager or designated shall administratively approve changes of the uses within the master plan, which changes do not exceed fifteen percent. Changes in excess of fifteen percent or those that are inconsistent with the zoning or land development regulations will require the approval of the city commission and the city's planning zone commission. As part of the land development regulations, there is, the city has an administrative official. Under the provisions of section three point one of the land development regulations, the city manager shall appoint an administrative official, who shall be charged with the authority to administer the city's LDRs and to enforce the regulations and procedures contained herein. So the administrative official acts on land use, development activities, including site development plans, compliance with submittal requirements, applicable zoning, land use, negotiated agreements, and the city's comprehensive plan. So the denial development order. The denial development order, which is the subject of this appeal, was not issued on the basis of whether a plan presented was good or bad, or better or worse designed than previous submittals. The order was issued after review of the materials submitted and was based on the requirements of section three point two and a determination that the site plan submitted was not in substantial conformance with the approved development agreement. The order identifies eight points that deviated from substantial compliance, I'm sorry, substantial conformance with the approved VA. This again is just a look at the eight neighborhoods and what staff was reviewing in terms of the substantial compliance between the proposed site plan and the master plan that was adopted with the development agreement.
So Ali, can you read that? Can you read this?
The eight neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Sure. There's a.
Because, yeah, yeah. I would prefer to read that one.
Okay. There's waterfront mixed use, pedestrian main street mixed use, downtown mixed use, convertible live-work living, waterfront living, downtown living, tranquil living, and an amenity area. Each of those is further defined as to what they are, and in question is not. Well, in question is the location of these neighborhoods as they were referred on the master plan. So, the next point. Okay, so in the development order, eight points were noted that were found to be inconsistent with the master plan. So point one stated that the master plan approved as an integral and supremely important part of the development agreement specified types of residential uses. The proposed site plan only identifies two-hundred-and-thirty-five units without specifying a variation leading to ambiguity and providing a variety of housing stock. The development information on the schematic design plan identifies breakdown of number of bedrooms, but not a breakdown necessarily in types of housing such as types, sizes, locations, including different forms of housing, being detached single-family, townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, any sort of garden apartments, just this number of units. It does count out, it does call out different bedroom quantities in those units. The second point was noted to be a component of the proposed change of the non-residential uses as set forth in the proposed site plan exceeds fifteen percent threshold allocated to the developer and applicant to seek without formal amendment to the development agreement in accordance with the processes mandated by controlling state law. Point three states that the retail restaurants face modification from thirty-five thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty square feet to twenty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-fifteen square feet in the proposed site plan constitutes a reduction of over twenty percent and also requires amendment of the development agreement in accordance with the processes mandated by controlling state law. So the development information on the schematic design plan clearly identifies a breakdown of non-residential uses. There's, there was question in the appeal letter that states that it was a difference between residential and non-residential. But when staff compared it to the master plan and the information on the master plan, there is a breakdown of residential, I'm sorry, of non-residential uses, meaning retail, restaurant, and office. The overall percentage change in the retail and restaurant exceeds the fifteen percent and would require an amendment by this commission, not by city manager or staff.
Ali, let me ask you a quick question there. Are LDRs distinguish between office, retail, and restaurant as different uses, correct?
Correct. They are independent lane uses. The way the master plan was laid out, it calls out retail and restaurant together, and then it does separate office. So it's not necessarily a difference of residential versus non-residential. The residential does have a breakdown. So point four and five are grouped together. Point four, while the rearrangement of the neighborhoods does not necessarily require amendments of the development agreement in appropriate contexts, the relocations proposed on the site plan submitted alter the master plan in a significant manner that materially changes dynamics of the neighborhood types within the overall design and are thus inconsistent with the approved development agreement master plan. Point five states that the original design as set forth in the master plan effectively screens the parking areas from the rise of way with building runages. The revised designs and the proposed plan do not achieve this buffering effect resulting in non-numerical modification to the plan. As this change is not percentage-based, it does not have a numeric value that can be varied by the city manager in a development agreement provision and requires amendments of the development agreement in accordance with the processes mandated by controlling state law. So as noted, relocating the elements of neighborhoods creates barriers to pedestrian movement, contributes to heat island effects, reduces the vibrancy and diversity of the neighborhoods, and detracts from the original design by removing, the exhibit shows which neighborhoods, which segment neighborhoods were being removed and the resulting design at the end. This is also an overview perspective from the master plan that showed where those buildings would break up that overall continuity.
Explain the heat island.
Heat island, if you have a continuous parking lot with, without appropriate landscaping, shading, more breakups of the building, shadows, things like that, it allows the heat to trap in the asphalt, and then it just gets continually out.
Okay. Can you? I didn't go back.
The back one?
Okay, the far right, that's the origin of the master plan.
The far.
Far right, sorry, far right.
Okay.
The original master.
The middle one just identifies which two neighborhoods were relocated.
Okay, were they relocated or were they taken out? Because it looks like the buildings that are now probably controlled, I mean, already exist in those plants.
The applicant is asserting that they were relocated, so.
What neighborhood was?
The one on the left is the tranquil living. The one on the right, that was established, the recreational and amenity area.
Okay, so, and the, plenty on the far left. The narrow, horizontal building. At the top, behind the apartment and the, what neighborhood was that in before?
It was part of five, which was the waterfront living, according to this master plan.
So what happened to that building? Oh, that matches the site plan.
Okay.
So the building that was part of five, that's part of the two buildings involved, so, that's what.
As it is proposed on this plan, yes. But as staff reviewed it, it's just inconsistent with what your original permit was. So the applicant.
I had noticed that that building was there originally. I thought they had moved it.
I, I'm not sure if they've just been rezoned, but the neighborhood that was meant to be set and then breaking up the parking lot and giving that the look of this, with the corridor and pedestrian. But I'll talk about tranquil living, just to say. Okay, tranquil living. Point six, it says the tranquil living space set forth in the development agreement was defined as a quiet pedestrian-only street lined by townhomes. The location in the proposed site plan for the neighborhood type place, places between the building and the parking lot, without tree-lined streets, without an element of quiet. This does not meet the purpose of the townhomes as set forth in the development agreement master plan and accordingly requires amendment of the development order in accordance with the processes mandated by controlling state law. So this is where, I guess it might answer your question, it has, it shows where tranquil living was versus where the applicant has placed on the new site plan.
Thank you.
Okay. So the other one is point seven, which is the amenity site. It's been relocated from a centrally recessed area along Commercial Street to a primary location just south of San Diego Boulevard at Sanford Avenue, directly across the street from Sanford Civic Center. The change removes equal access to the amenities and places from the location that removes external pedestrian access and walkability, thus substantially materially deviating from the overall design set forth in the master plan and accordingly requires changes and amendment to the development agreement. So the amenity area has been relocated to the far north, at East Boundbury, in a site that we can see in the exhibit. It's now only well-traveled Sanford Avenue. It's adjacent to the Civic Center, and it's the connector between First Street and River Lawn. All non-residential pedestrian traffic will have no external access to the development in this area. Should they, you know, originally where the buildings were and where the amenity was, it's now further away from a large percent of the units. And then it's also now on a primary street where no one from the outside can or would have access to it because it's obviously a private amenity space for the apartment or other townhome unit occupiers. So point eight is just that the additional technical insufficiencies exist as to the proposed site plan relative to which the applicant has been advised of the necessary information which is needed in, of a submission in order to submit a complete site plan. So as noted in the prior slides, staff, and the staff report and this presentation, information provided by the applicant to date has been insufficient for us to do a full development plan review. There's little to no dimensional information as to the structure sizes and setbacks and distances and coverages, other necessary information to conduct a proper site and engineering review. So in conclusion, in the staff report, the copy of the applicant's memorandum and notice to appeal identifying reasons for which the appeal has been filed, the presentation and the staff report does not specifically address each response in the memorandum, but provides staff's responsibilities and review and explanation and justification for the denial points. The administrative official and city staff are charged with reviewing for compliance with adopted zoning regulations, not modification of said regulations. So as identified in this case, the development agreement is the zoning of the property to which compliance is being determined. Staff holds to the merits of the denial and stands ready to answer any questions related to the action.
Any official questions to?
Ali, I just want some clarification. When you go back to administrative official, when it says the city manager shall appoint an administrative official who shall be charged with the authority and so on and so forth. Can you clarify what that is for the matter in question? And who do, did we have an administrative official for this item here? Clarify for me, please.
Sure. Okay. The administrative official, which is typically the director of planning as it relates to the city's effort, is currently myself and pardon me, was, was Ms. Amy King. The administrative official is charged with making sure that developments are compliant with the development issuing site development permits, reviewing, approving, denial, all of those actions as they relate to compliance with the land development regulations accrued upon development agreements and the comprehensive plan, obviously most supreme. So in this case, the zoning of this property is the development agreement. And staff reviewed the development agreement in relation to the site plan that's been submitted and this comparison plan that staff requested so that we could assess it and determine that it was not consistent based on those eight plans, eight plans.
Any other questions?
I could stop.
Good evening. My name is John Paulbiv and I represent Sanford Waterfront Partners. And just through the chair, I pointed the clarification. I'll do my presentation, then I can call Mr. Simpson back for my examination. Or should I cross the table before I do my?
He orders, why not? He can present and then cross it down. Trevor, whether you prefer.
I've got one question. Is this, this whole judicial thing, box to me? So if he's giving a presentation and maybe testimony, how come he didn't have to stare?
He just chose not to. Remember, Lonnie said they could choose not to, he chose not to.
This is an attorney who represents a client. He is not a witness, he is an attorney representing the client. His client is going to give testimony, I presume, a little bit, and the attorney may ask his client questions, the attorney may ask the sensitive questions. And there will be an opportunity for both sides to sum up at the end, and then the matter will be turned over to the commission for deliberation and a decision.
Thank you. This is something new for us, so I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
For what it's worth, it's something new to read.
Well, I understand, because I forgot to remind everyone, this was by Lady Dishaw, and I did talk to Eileen and to Mr. Root on several occasions over the course of the last week about the details of this and the process.
And I have also spoken with Eileen regarding just this matter. We're not talking about anything else, right? So regarding this matter, I've spoken back at a meeting with Eileen.
You may. Okay.
None.
All right. I'm trying to get this straight.
Understood, understood. All right. So thank you for the time. As I said, my name is John Colberg, and I'm honored to represent South, I'm sorry, Sanford Waterfront Partners. I think it's important to understand that some of the comments in the recommendation that's in your package with H, and some of the comments by Ms. Hinson, relate to really a legal question regarding what the, what the status of Ms. King's approval was. I'm going to refer to Sanford Waterfront Partners as SWP, just because it's quicker. So SWP is not offering that evidence as an approval that's somehow binding on the city. It's a fact of consequence. The approval occurred. The approval says that the city agreed that what's presented in the site plan that was referenced in that approval, which is, I'll give you a reference if you want to find it, it's in your item H at page sixty-three, nope, sorry, at page two-seventeen, sorry.
Two-seventeen?
Two-seventeen, yes. And if you could put up exhibit E, I just don't have a second. And the important point about this letter from Ms. King is the fact that it refers to the site plan dated July tenth, which Mr. Root was kind enough to share with the members in advance of his base, because I noticed that it wasn't being had. So if you would scroll down to the bottom and follow the one I have right there. See, it's referring to the site plan that was dated July tenth, twenty-twenty. Thank you. So that site plan was provided to you today. Do you have the copy? The site plan I sent you this morning. Again? Left, is that the left page? There. Okay. Turn sideways, so it's a little different than the one Ms. Hinson judged it, but if you use your imagination, you can see that this site plan is the same as the site plan that Ms. Hinson reviewed on October tenth, I'm sorry, October twenty-twenty-three. It has the same tranquil living, has the same location to the amenity, has the same square footage for use. All of the content, content of this site plan that the city said was consistent with the DA, our book was rejected in the development order. I don't think there's going to be much of a dispute about that. I really don't. I don't think that's a fact that the parties disagree. And I will confess to you, SWP does not say that that approval that Ms. King provided is somehow enforceable today. But it's my understanding that your job is going to be to evaluate competent substantial evidence about what complies with the development need. And now you have two facts before you, the facts that Ms. Hinson presented that says it doesn't comply, and the fact that the city said before it does.
In the form of Lady King's letter? I'm confused.
Correct.
So Ms. King said.
Well, Ms. King...
And Ms. Hinson said it did, and the city said it did.
No, Ms. Hinson...
And Ms. Hinson said it did, and Ms. King said it did.
Fair enough. The city says it does now, doesn't, and the city says it did then. Or Ms. Hinson says it does, doesn't now, and the King said it did. It does, it did then. Either way you slice it, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to play tricks. I'm just trying to get through my presentation, and I can get on this investment.
Okay, but before you go, go to that, you said on October of twenty-twenty-three, who approved what? Because you said Ms. Hinson in October of twenty-twenty-three.
Ms. Hinson received this, this, same plan, it's dated different, but it's the same plan, same content, in October of twenty-twenty-three.
Received?
Received. In the denial order, this is the plan that Ms. Hinson denied.
It was submitted through citizens for review by staff.
So, the square footage analysis, if you would go back to exhibit E there? The square footage analysis in Ms. Hinson's letter says it's under fifteen percent, which we agree with. The moves were not deemed to be a substantial deviation from the development agreement. The fact of the matter is, is that but for the need to secure financing, this, this plan under Ms. King would have always been in place. But with COVID, and the evidence will show you, with COVID and securing financing, this project took longer than it had done in Ms. King's letter. So the issues that you were asking Ms. Hinson about and inquiring the neighborhoods, those facts, there's really no dispute that those components all remain in the site plan. The tranquil living has the necessary landscaping, it has the same features that are in the original site plan, just moving them to a different place so that SWP provided more parking available to the community, so that the residents who live at this project will not have to endure parking on the street, taking parking spaces away. This delivers ninety-five more spaces. And I had a discussion with Ms. Hinson before this hearing, just a few moments ago, and that belief that had Ms. Hinson provided comments to the site plan issue since in October, rather than issue a denial order, that this matter might not be before the commission today, members will be asked maybe a project to get a determination, I suspect, although don't know, that the parties would have been able to get to some sort of a resolution that could work. Don't know, that's speculation on my part.
I'm confused there. You're saying that SWP did not receive any information that there were problems with the site plan?
What I'm saying is, is that the denial order is the first time that SWP learned that the relocation of those components and the change in the square footage was a problem for Sanford, first time, when the denial order came. I'm also saying that, although I'm not going to call Brian out as a witness, he was attending the meeting and was equally assigned when the denial order came. I'm also saying that it is the city's authority to do more than what was offered in the recommendation letter, either affirm the denial order or reverse the denial order. You can send it back. You can deny it, you can, you can deny the denial order without mandating it be approved. And if you vote against SWP's site plan, you will affirm the denial order. We request that you waive the one-year period so that SWP can see that a new site plan without having to waive a year. And I've conferred with Mr. Root and with Ms. Hinson, and they do not oppose that request. And so with that, I would call Ms. Hinson to that. Well, sorry.
Before you do that, I need, I need to go first. With all due respect to you, please, Mr. Colberg, can you hear me, can you hear me well and good down there? I'm just a little bit, a little concerned and a little confused here because in the fourteen and a half years that I've sat here, I, we've never allowed an attorney to cross-examine a city staff member ever in front of us, and I don't understand why we're doing that today. And this concerns me, this concerns me greatly. She's never been cross-examined. In all the times that we had Steve Cooper and every other attorney in Central Florida sitting up here, we never allowed an attorney for an applicant to quote, and he used the term cross-examine, a city employee. I'm not comfortable at all with this situation because I feel like if, if she's going to be quote, cross-examined by an attorney, then she also needs to have legal representation or an attorney or some advice or something. This is very, this does not seem right to me, Mr. Colberg, and I want you to tell me why this is fine, even though in fourteen and a half years, we've never done it before.
Okay, I understand your question. And the answer is that a number of years ago, courts in Florida, in a series of cases, the legal system through the courts decided that items are not only administrative, which commissions handle, or legislative, but there are some decisions that cities make and counties and boards of the state of Florida, which are quasi-judicial in character. And those types of cases, and this is one, need to follow, the courts say, a more formal procedure. And cases over the last several years have made it more and more formal and more and more clear that the failure to do that means that it gets sent back to the city to do it right. We have had quasi-judicial hearings in the past, and attorneys have had the right to cross-examine, but they have not exercised it.
Never.
And this is done, I hope, in most of the four hundred cities in Florida now, because those that aren't doing it are exposing themselves to have to go across the street to get it sent back and start all over with instructions from the court on how to do it right.
Which we've always...
So I understand you being uncomfortable. I understand it is the first time that a hearing has been this formal, but it does meet the requirements of the law. And this attorney has the legal right to ask Ms. Hinson questions. He does not have the right to be discourteous, he does not have the right to browbeat her, he does not have the right to make her miserable, but he does have the right to ask her questions.
So if he does those things, who's not to? The mayor?
If...
I think you're correct.
Commissioner?
I have very quick skin, so it's okay.
The mayor is in charge of the meeting, but if I feel the matter is going astray, I will speak up. And I have every confidence in this member of the bar, being a gentleman, and I know he's going to represent his client well, but I expect that he will do it in accordance with the law. And if I am concerned about it, I will mention it to him, and I suspect we can work it out. So I understand your apprehension, but I recommend that we do a follow-up if we need to.
No, I totally, but I think, you know, well, well, we're mentioning that we've never done it in fourteen and a half years, so it's new to all of us, including the mayor and everyone else sitting here, and, I mean, let's face it, you know, and I have the confidence in this gentleman too, but we also know how these things can go south and get really ugly really quickly, and so I just wanted to, to run it...
Through the chair.
Just to summarize, we've been holding quasi-judicial hearings for a number of years.
I understand that.
They have not been this formal, but there are more and more cases where the judges in the circuits and in the appellate courts, and even in some cases the Supreme Court, say those who don't do it are not doing it right. We want to do it right.
We do, I understand.
And that's the effort that wants us to do it right. And I suspect we will come to a decision that somebody will agree with and somebody may not, that effort will want, and then there is a process to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Colberg. You're welcome.
Through the chair. Sanford also passed an ordinance this January, which formalized this process, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, you were referring to that as you read at opening, and I believe in that new ordinance, there's a discussion about examination, cross-examination. So I think it's new because Sanford has formalized its process, and Council Colberg has already explained the history of the case law. I agree, and I promise you, Commissioner, I'm not a disrespecting man. My mother raised me better than that.
Oh, I have no doubt, I... We all watch too much Court TV.
Yeah, unfortunately, cross-examination is never that exciting, I just don't know what you mean. Yeah. We've got a lot of the papers, so we're safe. Okay. Ms. Hinson, you saw the approval by Ms. King.
I have seen it.
And you saw the July tenth, the, the site plan?
I have seen it.
And I see one of those references in the... Okay. If you would, if you would turn to, let's see, let's go to exhibit E again, which is two-seventeen in the packet, so if you want to look in the paper or the two-nine screen.
We don't really have the bench numbers here, but...
Yeah, I wish we did.
I'm sorry. All right. I don't have it.
I don't have it, exhibit E. I've got C and C there's D. There's D.
It's reversed.
Okay, so... There's exhibit, found it right after exhibit E.
Exhibit E is on the back page.
What? Exhibit E is on the back page.
I apologize. I've been going through mine, so I'm out of order.
Management system?
It's just one page. Is that all it is?
On the back.
You've got D and then like two pages.
I've got D and then I've got all of this.
It's A D. I've got A. It's in D. It's in D.
No, I'm tripping.
Thank you, Ms. Hinson.
Thank you. All right, so paragraph four. That's the approval for the Swept Way Reform less than fifteen percent, correct?
According to Amy's letter.
Yes. No, Cody Payne's letter, that's the approval for less than fifteen percent change, correct?
According to Amy's letter, that is the calculation drawn for the non-residential uses as a reduction of fifteen percent.
And Ms. King represented that that was approved, right?
Ms. King represented that that was approved.
Ms. King also did not take it, we can take it down, yeah, this is all right. Ms. King also did not take exception to moving the triple living space, true?
The relocation of the neighborhood is disallowed, or should have been concerned about.
And that would be true for triple living, right? And that would also be true for the amenities, right?
Correct.
There's no concern about the mix of units for the residential, correct?
I don't know that there's a reference to that. I say. You could say there's no concern because there's no reference to it, but there does not appear to be a reference regarding the residential breakdown.
Fair enough. So let's take the one real easy one. As you said, this is the July tenth, twenty twenty site plan, right? And the July tenth, twenty twenty site plan had the units listed on one of the sheets, correct? Well, why don't we go down? Can you go back to, if you want to, my section?
The actual.
No, I want to see if, oh, the residential. Next page? Next page? Go ahead. No. I want to see, oh, there you go. You don't see it. No, you wouldn't help me do this. Next page, please. Okay, so we would go to, if you could go to, if you go to Exhibit D at my page twenty-nine, which is, I know you don't have the page numbers, but it's going to be sixty-three. It's a site plan. And I'll put it up here and maybe it's based everyone can see it. Have you called Project Program to pull up that section then? Earlier when you were talking about the size of the units and the number of units, that's what you were referring to, right?
Correct. It does break down that the unit, is it a bedroom count? Or the public unit, but it does not break down whether or not they're townhomes or apartments or potentially duplex, quadplex, housing types. It does not include housing types.
Right, and the housing types are defined by the different neighborhood that they're in, correct?
They should be.
But if you go, all right, go back to the last page. So if you, the pages you were referring to in your comparison, we had you reading the different neighborhoods for the commission? Yes. So triple living describes the triple living, right?
Just like where it is and where it goes.
Right, and that would be true for the triple townhomes. Okay, and then for each of the different areas, it describes the type of unit in those neighborhoods, right?
The type of unit, yeah, but the bedroom count in the unit, yes.
But also.
The triple living does define it as such, but the triple living appears to have been linked from what we're supposed to phase, it doesn't necessarily need that definition as good as it is.
It's townhomes.
It's what we townhomes, yes. The breakdown of the townhomes, the definition says town.
And each of the others, the living, work units goes to that neighborhood, the same rule, right?
It appears so, yes, but as noted in the presentation, a lot of what we receive is not what we're used to receiving in terms of plans to review. So they're not engineered drawings the way we would normally have them detailed. So it's hard for staff to do a full review on things that are not normal to build practice.
And is it fair to say that had SWP produced a whole set of site plans, any ones, siblings, new ones, for construction site plan included, and then you denied it because of the moves, that would have, you'd draw that, right?
I don't have the plans to review, so I don't know, but it would likely yield it a similar conclusion that it is inconsistent with the master plan, that it's part of the development agreement.
Right, and that's because triple living moved, right?
One of these, isn't it?
Right, triple living moved, right? You have the Swept Way change, yeah. The amenities moved, right? And the unit description, right?
Well, I mean, they gave a better breakdown. Unit descriptions, it's, there wasn't enough information. There wasn't enough information provided for us to answer King.
And had the, had the development, had the city provided conditional approval and then conditioned on approved engineering plans, that could have allowed the progress of the government to go, right?
If we had conditional approval, we don't have a conditional approval. We either have an approval or we don't have an approval. And it's either issued by a development, which is in a development order form, or a development order itself. We don't issue letters as approval. So if there was a development order issued that said something was in compliance with the master plan, then the development order would hold.
Right, and if that development order said it's subject to approved construction plans, that could, that's one way the development order can be issued, right?
In this case, the development agreement, next step would have been the engineering and development plans. So the ultimate yield after the development agreement was adopted was to build two engineering plans for us to issue a project construction. There's, our normal procedure doesn't include a potential site plan of any kind. So it just, what was submitted was non-normal procedure, and staff had difficulty reviewing it as comments were provided to the applicant repeatedly that the information that we had was insufficient to make a determination. While we received the master plan comparison, that's when it was determined that discussions to tell them that we needed this information yielded the denial of development.
So let's take that a little bit of a time away.
Excuse me, can you guys speak up, please?
Yeah, we're sharing a mic, so it's kind of hard, yeah.
I'm trying to be respectful of your personal safety.
Right.
So the city hadn't told SWP that the configuration depicted in that drawing there was acceptable, right?
In my tenure as developer, as the administrative official, we had not told them that that configuration was compatible or incompatible. We continued comments to them were, we need more information.
Do you want to separate microphone? Seven five eight here.
It does. That way I don't have to be hovering over Ms. Hinson trying to answer my questions.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mike, just, just.
Okay. Right, I'm trying to answer your questions, but they're a little different than process, so it's difficult to answer.
Understood. The city never gave an indication to SWP that that site plan was acceptable to them. Just the configuration.
A formal approval that would be an acceptable approval was never given.
There was no indication that that configuration was acceptable, right?
Indication, that's questionable.
I'm sorry.
Because you're saying that this is an indication that it was acceptable. Was there a formal approval as granted? Okay.
In twenty twenty-three, there was no indication that that plan was approved.
From everything that I've reviewed that my staff has issued and then other departments in the city have issued is that we need more information.
Right, and there were no comments on that plan that went to SWP that said, we're concerned with the moves of those neighbors.
We held multiple meetings with SWP, and I advised them, and the February twenty-first meeting was the most recent one, advising them that I didn't have a comparison between that plan and the master plan showing what they were. So it was, this is the first time, this plan that we're debating this evening was the first time I'd ever seen in writing something from them saying this moved to here, this moved to here, this moved to here. It was never presented to us prior. So there was no way for us to give them an approval or a denial on those movements.
You had, in twenty twenty-three, you had the twenty seventeen master plan. And you had the, in October twenty twenty-three, you had that plan, right?
Correct.
And you could look at the two and see that.
They did not, correct. Verbally, they were advised that. Verbally, we advised them that they did not reflect the same development and repeatedly asked for these additional pieces of information.
And then the first written communications from the city that it did not satisfy the VA was the denial order, right?
Correct.
I have another question. I have to move the page.
Mr. Culver, is it appropriate for me to ask a couple of questions to clarify what they were just talking about?
You can ask.
Okay, because, you said numerous times that there was never an indication that the configuration was unacceptable. And that it was never, I think in your letter, you say a hundred and thirty-six days after it was submitted, at no time did the city express that there were technical inconsistencies. I mean, weren't there multiple comments?
There are in the packet.
Okay, and if you look at the citizen served record from twenty twenty, were there comments then about it?
It was the beginning of a review, but it was never completed prior to the issuance of this letter that we're able to determine.
Okay, and in the eleven thirteen twenty-three CTA hearing memo, do you remember in that memo stating that we don't have the required submissions to make a determination?
I don't specifically recall said document. I mean, I remember going through the hearings and whatnot. I have read a lot on the site in the last few weeks, but that particular document I can't quote quotes from.
Well, you know, during the CTA hearing, we repeatedly said that our approval at that point was based on the original master plan.
Correct, and we were, at that point, this commission made it clear to me that my staff and myself were charged with making sure that whatever moves forward meets that master plan with your compliance.
All right, thank you. I got, I didn't get any questions. I got, I got out of line.
I've got one further question. I want to go back to the twenty twenty letter that we were speaking about. Okay, it says, based on the above, the revised site plan drawing, blah, 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 was approved. It's recommended that SWP proceed with the engineering plan review process. Did SWP proceed with the engineering plan process?
We have no engineered drawings to date.
So from twenty twenty, when this letter was sent, the next step was it was recommended that SWP proceed with the engineering plan review process, and yet we still have not received any engineering plan.
They are currently working with an engineer on some technical elements, but an engineering plan meeting our standards force middle have not yet been received. And the most recent comments forwarded to the applicant, which is in their packet, identify that deficiency.
Okay, and then my question, and you're just a regular question. Is there an expiration on any letters that are sent out? So this was sent in twenty twenty, and we have not heard any response from the developer applicant. Is there an expiration date on that? Is there statute on that? Can you clarify?
There are elements within our LDR that expire certain site plans associated with condition uses, variances, and elements of such for a period of six months. It expires six months. We do have some one-year expirations on certain approvals for development plan as well. But it has been four years, so even if a one-year approval were allowed on this letter from Amy, it's been four years since the actual approval letter was issued, if it's seen as an approval letter, which is still.
Okay, and this one is a long one, and you may, you may or may not know it, but I'm just asking. It says, based on the above, the revised site plan drawings, based on the above, the above are six items that are listed there, from the fiber story building all the way down to the fiber cement siding and what have you. Did all of those meet with our city code? Is any of those six items outside of our city code? Just for example, if there was an error with Ms. King on what was submitted in the one through six, because it says, based on the above, it's approved. But does that mean, the six that are above, did that meet our city code? Did that mean?
This site is different because their zoning is this development grid. They have to comply with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was met when the master plan went through the process. However, these five points of changes to the approved master plan and the development grid. If I understand your question.
You got it.
Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Culver, I do have a question.
Yes.
If we can go back to this document?
Okay. Those, yes.
And zero in on the, the front page, zero in on the mix of the two hundred and fifty-five units?
Okay, yeah.
Which of those are townhomes?
I couldn't tell you by looking at those. I'd have to go look at the other one.
All right, thank you.
And by the way, that's not testimony.
Yeah, I understand.
Only comment. Only comment.
All right, anything else? Okay, so, what's next to the presentation?
The call, Mr. Heisenfeld.
Okay.
Are you ready, please?
Can we take a, um, five-minute break? Is that okay?
I'll go to the planner.
Five minutes? Thank you.
Hang on just a minute, hang on just a minute.
Oh, I knew that, I had to run upstairs.
No, don't, don't pause, don't pause.
I knew that, that's fine. You want me to run upstairs and go get some more? Yes, sir. I'm running upstairs to go get more water and get Ronnie some peanut butter crackers because he's hungry. No, there's no bins at all, so I will be back. I saw him in the paint, was that far? I saw him coming up, I was like.
Oh, pardon, well, yeah.
That's why I thought.
Yeah, I know, right? Oh, thank you so much, Mayor. She's had three kids.
Bear in mind no business.
I asked Lisa Holder, I was like, who's the owner?
Sadly, it's because of construction, it's down, so it's taking a while to bring any more back. I know, we got, we got used to it, wasn't it nice? But later tonight, I've got an exciting piece of art to talk about.
Can you stick your head outside and see if Commissioner Wiggins is out there, please? There he is.
Yeah, right, yeah.
He stays up late now.
We are, are back.
Is there a ready?
Yes.
I do. Mr. Your name?
Richard J. Heisenfeld.
Um, Mr. Heisenfeld, um, SW, you heard the testimony before, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's talk about the time before Ms. King stated that she agreed with the site plan proposal, okay? So before July 10th, 2020, okay?
Yes, sir, all right.
What was the reason for bringing a proposed move of those units and changing the schedule?
There were two reasons, primary reasons. The first reason was because we did not feel, one partner and I, that, that there was viability to really selling townhouses. The second reason, and the most important reason, was that we had spoken to US HUD about financing the project. Martin was aware that we were doing that, he helped us on a few occasions. And they insisted that this project be financed with, with one and a half cars per unit, as opposed to one car per unit, which is the requirement of Schedule S.
And so what did you do in order to create the one and a half cars per unit?
We relocated the tranquil living townhomes to an alternative location, which provides for the same sort of quality. And we relocated the swimming pool, which is the primary amenity area, to the area that it is in and the proposed, to, in the, Ms. King approved site plan. And we expanded and actually got ninety-four additional parking spaces. That was a big deal, it was important.
Okay, and what happened, um, once, once you got all those proposals, what did you do with that proposal? What did you send?
We, we clarified it on a drawing. We had multiple discussions and back and forth with Ms. King. At least two letters, plus two different of them, to, uh, to get to her approval letter plus a series of meetings.
What happened after the approval, um, and between October and 2023? Let me ask this question. Uh, you remember in the letter, it says, "Recommend getting an engineer room."
That's right.
Why didn't SWP do the engineer room?
We were first seeking a financing before we did expensive engineering drawings.
Okay, and how did that go?
Well, we only recently had our, and they know that, had our financing approved, and that's exactly why we're proceeding.
Um, between, um, July 10th, 2020 and, uh, October 2023, were there any, um, any communications or statements, uh, that indicated that the moves to the site plan were not acceptable to center?
No, there was no communications.
You heard, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor ask Miss Hinson about, um, the approval of the financing, the bond, the bond financing, and said, "In there, it requires a strict monitoring of the building," remember that?
Yes.
Okay, and how, how do you answer that question, whether the site plan that is from July 2020, August 2023, where that's circumstantial to be here?
The development agreement is actually a flexible document. It gives us the opportunity to literally X-out buildings, to delete buildings that, yes, absolutely, miss King. If, 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 you know, if we chose to for some reason, it acknowledges that market conditions may change in the case of, would someone please, yeah.
Go, just.
Yes.
Answer my question.
And so, and so in fact. And so we removed those for sale townhomes and we created another tranquil living area on both, on both blocks one and block two. And we relocated the swimming pool and the amenities to, to the new location and picked up the advantage of getting these additional ninety-four parking spaces without any disadvantages.
And so after you submitted, oh, sorry. Before you submitted the October 2023 site plan, um, what was the instruction from the city to us in the fall of 2023?
To the best of my recollection, it was that that, that Ms. King's letter had expired. That was done with the site plan application. That her letter had expired and we needed to submit for site plan approval again.
So what did you do?
We took the same site plan for all, uh, and, and we re-submitted it in October of 2023.
What happened next?
Uh, we got a series of comments from the staff, all reviewing the documents. Uh, not, not one of those comments addressed the relocation of these two, um, building or the pool.
What about, what about the, um, the square footage?
Uh, not one addressed the square footage either.
Now, you heard the citizen testify that, um, in many conversations and communications with SWP, the city made clear that it didn't strictly adhere to the DA, right?
Yes.
And what were you doing to reflect, I was like, what was SWP doing to reflect that it strictly adhered to the development?
Like I said, the development agreement is, is a flexible document. It's not meant to be, that preliminary drawing is not meant to be the final drawing for anything. We, we were enhancing it as you enhance every design.
So, uh, what were some of the comments you were receiving on the site, uh, on the site plan after October 2023? But which, which comments you were receiving, what type of comments you were receiving?
We received comments from all sorts of disciplines within the city, from, from fire and police, and, and some of them are completely satisfied already. There are others, we're fully aware of, that need to have the technical, the drawings completed. They are in process, but before we get to that process, we've got to figure out where we're placing our building.
And what about the historic preservation?
That, uh, item for the COA in block three was approved by the historic preservation board some months ago.
COA?
So to be of appropriateness.
And that was one of the steps that needed to be fulfilled?
That was one of the steps that needed to be fulfilled, yes.
Was that comment that Miss Hinson gave?
Yes.
Uh, what other types of comments did you receive from Miss Hinson when you were writing the site plan?
Outside of the staff comments, we received no comments directly from Miss Hinson that, uh, relative to the layout of the property, except the, um, the approval, I guess, of the deletion of the bike paths in order to increase the size of the sidewalks.
What about the demucky?
Demucky was one of the drawings that was, that we, civil engineering drawings that we had provided, only appropriate to provide it to the city for review and approval because, because they're paying for that demucky.
Were they done?
Yes, they're completely done.
So this was a process?
It's a process.
Um, well, you heard Miss Hinson explain to, explain to the members that, uh, February meeting had resulted in a demand that you show a comparison of the twenty, twenty-three site plan to the master plan, do you remember that?
That's right.
Okay, but what was the reason, uh, Miss Hinson gave before asking that?
She wanted, and, and she stated this in the meeting with Brian and myself, uh, that, that she wanted anyone to, who ever questioned the decision, uh, to be able to come up and take a look and see how similar they were.
And after that meeting, when was the next time you heard from the city about the site plan?
When we received the development denial.
I can do it.
I'm not sure who you're tendering to. Well, whoever wants to cross it out, we're asking questions. Okay, all right, let me, let me ask one more quick. When, okay, so you moved the tranquil living up to the front of the, to the left front side. What changed? How did, how did those areas change to become tranquil living rather than what are currently?
Let me explain for a second, Mayor Wood, what tranquil, what the tranquil living units are. I mean, they're, they're townhomes, yes, they have their own garages, um, but they don't open up to a street, to a busy street. They open up to, to, to what was an, either one of these places. A, a, a public space that, that is pedestrian. a, a, a public space that, that is pedestrian on it. And they has trees, and it has lighting, and it has fountains, and it has, you know, uh, all sorts of things that, uh, that, that make it a nice public street. It's the kind of public street that you might walk on in Europe. A narrow street, not a, not a, you know, seventy-five foot wide right way, right?
So, and so you're there with the space between the two, between the buildings?
No, no, the, the, the space remains the same, but, but the point is, it, it does not, what makes it tranquil living is that it does not open up to a superhighway front.
Okay, but, but the building that is there, that is called tranquil living, was, already had that configuration, correct?
It already had that configuration, yes. It already had every one of those qualities, it just wasn't labeled tranquil living.
Okay, so the change was to label it tranquil living?
And the designer as tranquil living.
Well, I mean, but you just said it, what, you didn't change the designer?
The design didn't need to be changed.
Okay.
It was already a townhome.
So, oh, wait, I've got one more question and then, um, I'll finish.
And why applies the title?
So what's the difference between a loft and a townhome?
It meets the definition of a townhome under, uh, uh, under your, um, city code. It needed, uh, we have lofts. Those lofts have the two-story living rooms in some areas and, and bedrooms that overlook the living room. But they could also have, uh, two bedrooms on the second floor and conventional living rooms downstairs too.
Okay, but now, uh, do any of the buildings?
That doesn't affect it whether they're tranquil living or not. The tranquil living is the fact that it's not on a main road.
Okay, so the buildings, I don't know if remember there, because I don't have that paper in front of me. But the buildings that are considered tranquil living, do any of them have more than a loft bedroom?
There were six of them that we were including that, that had two bedrooms, were to have, uh, two bedrooms, on the second floor instead of lofts.
Okay, I'm not sure that answered my question. As, as currently designed, with your, with your, with the March twenty twenty site plan, do any of the buildings that are considered tranquil living, are all of those lofts, or do any of them have multiple bedrooms?
In the March, i- in the October twenty twenty-three site plan, they did not. In our subsequent meeting with staff on the twenty-first of February, we proposed, everybody, an adjustment to the size of those, uh, buildings to, and, and to make some of those units for sale, six. That made them consistent with the, the six for sale units that we had discussed, you, you were concerned about at our, our hearing, uh, on the finance. So, so we were, we proposed along the way in that hearing, a new location for the six for sale townhomes, so that we would be consistent with the master plan.
So there's a potential change to the site plan from the last site plan that was presented?
They look identical. You just don't have the two-story space over your living room, you build, and you build two bedrooms.
All right, okay, Commissioner Britton?
Okay, Patrick, since that your question in the lines is, I'll now ask one.
Yeah, Don, I'm curious, where you moved the tranquil living spaces, they are facing the back of the, the buildings on the lakefront?
There's, the buildings on the lakefront are, are, you know, uh, Carter buildings, some overlooking the lake and some looking back towards the city, okay?
And what is, what is my view outside my tranquil living front door?
So, um, through the chair, uh, Mr. Heisenbauer did a, a rendering of what this space is supposed to look like. We just got it in, if it's okay, I'll bring it up, if it's not, I understand.
I'm gonna. Because the back goes into the parking lot, right?
The, the back goes to the parking lot and the garage is entered from the parking lot, Patrick.
Right, so what am I looking at from my front door, looking at the back?
Just, just, just a moment. You're looking at a narrow European-style street that does not have automobile traffic on it, that has fountains and greenery and trees and lighting overhead.
So it's a courtyard?
Pardon me, it's, it's, it's a courtyard, yes, and it intersects, we leave the whole site, but it intersects with the other courtyard.
Where, where is the?
And the same sort of, since, the courtyard is in the, in the front. And, and it actually intersects, there's, there are alleyways that, that continue. If you put up a site plan, they might, uh, um, it, 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 it's not just a straight line anymore.
That answers my question, but the, the reason I ask that question is, how would, how would staff ever know that, that that's, that that's the plan there?
Well, if, if there's.
From these drawings given?
Patrick, there's, there's a communication that has to go back and forth with staff. We sat with them on the twenty-first and we talked about where this, uh, February, we talked about where this would go. We didn't have, seem to have any objection, certainly, um, Bryant and I didn't get the feeling that there was any objection to anything at that, at that hearing. If there was, if, if staff had a problem with it, we would expect it as before, that, as, as with Ms. King, that she would write me something and say, there are five items that were really concerning me. And, and I would respond by, as an example, by offering this sort of a rendering to illustrate what this tree-lined, uh, views is what we call it in architectural terms, uh, would look like.
So, um, if we go back to the original master plan, in that drawing, uh, where the tranquil living was supposed to be?
Yeah.
It clearly shows, uh, trees.
Yeah.
It shows a, a view. Um, and so this, this drawing submitted, uh, under the revised plan, doesn't show that. So I don't know how you would expect staff to know that.
We were. If there was a question, Patrick, about it, you'd simply ask it. You're seeing it today. I would have given this sort of a rendering, this sort of an explanation or a detailed drawing if I knew before I had this denial of development order, uh, that this was that serious. We, we, this is a solvable problem, this is, you know, do we, do we want the ninety-four additional parking spaces that this plan brings? Can we be happy with the, the design of the news that we have here as a tranquil living space? Are actually advantages to the new location of the swimming pool and amenity area. What are those advantages? It's four feet up above the street level, down below, that's one of them. Now, it, and it is in the area of the five-story buildings, which have the highest density as opposed to the buildings on block, that side of block, uh, three, that have lofts.
Where, where is the parking for buildings now? Is that the main parking lot?
It's all in the main parking lots, actually.
So how will, how do people access? So I would park in that parking lot and then pass through the alley?
Or walk around?
And between the two, um?
Yes, you'll actually walk through the news.
You'll walk in front of the tranquil living?
You'll, you'll walk through the tranquil living space. There's a connection for, for, uh, every pedestrian area that one might need to go to, besides the front.
I'm not sure I would call it tranquil living there.
I yield to Commissioner Britton, thank you, Commissioner Britton.
So, I'm not sure if this is even a city, I mean, if, if this is, this has a lot of question or city. But I'm reading here, you, you brought up that you received this, a C of A, a certificate of appropriateness through HPP. And it looks like it was issued September sixteenth, twenty twenty. But then I'm also seeing that, that HPP, HPP approval has expired. And then you went before again and, uh, for a pre-application, it was approved February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. What was actually approved the second time, because it's showing that it was expired, that the one, the C of A that was issued in twenty twenty expired?
You're correct, the COA in of twenty twenty expired. And we, as part of the development approval through the planning department, had to go back for a, a new COA. And, and in doing so, um, the changes were actually minimal, but, uh, the board came up with some good ideas. And we implemented the ideas of the board, we added some additional windows and some of the buildings, we added some additional landscape in the back, there's a remaining parking area. Uh, and, and came away from the board with, with their approval on the date you suggested, of twenty twenty-four. Was that, and they just left their block three, right? Yes.
Okay, so I, I guess, now this is the question that I'm concerned about, because it says, in terms of the city land use approvals, the approval of the DA stands alone with one approval from HPP. Are there supposed to be additional approvals? That's what I'm reading here. No other actions I've ever received, but as they would be aside from the actions pertaining to the financing of their district park. And then it just goes on, indeed, HPP approval noted above has expired, thus the terms of the city land use approvals, the approval of the DA stands alone with the one approval from HPP.
Right.
So did they only need the sad one?
So my understanding is, if I'm not wrong, where you're reading that from, we have the original development agreement. We have the approval of the financing. We have the C of A for, for block three. And we have this denied. Those are the, the active, those are the active, um, approvals or submittals or denies. Those are the active things going on.
Why was it on block three?
Because that's the only one in the, the story. Any more, any other questions? Okay, I, well, let me ask, I've got some notes, if you like them all. Okay, um, so you said the, the reason for the, the main reason for the change, or one of the two main reasons for the change was that HUD wanted you to do more parking spaces. And was, was removing those, moving the one, the amenity and removing the other building, was that the only, um, thing you looked at in terms of ways to increase parking?
That was the most affordable way to increase parking, was to be more, more ground-level parking area. We also did a lot of park on U C R buildings as well, right? A lot of covered parking. But those are the two, the two ways to increase the parking, the project could tolerate a garage in cost of the road.
All right, and then, um, can you explain to me, we're on a completely different topic, how the live work units will work? Of granite, I guess?
Sure, and there are drawings of these, detailed drawings for every, every unit. The live work units have ground floors that are configured with a different set of doors in the front. And, uh, and, and could be easily changed back or forth if, if someone wanted to, um, to work, uh, uh, at one or have a shop there, you know, a jeweler or, or, or a, I don't know, even a, a, a small, uh, insurance agency, something. There's lots of opportunities for, for those to be rented as, as commercial spaces. We have, we have some, uh, live work buildings on block three, the historic block, uh, where the ground floor is, is fully built out as a, as a commercial space. And, and we have, uh, apartments up on the second and third floor above. The, they are, they are in fact studio spaces, I mean, we're, studio, uh, spaces that apartments that could be used in the same way, uh, the, the two, uh, buildings on block three, uh, that are in the same line, Alpena, um, are used.
Great, I'm not finished on this. Um, because, well, the, the areas that are labeled as live work, I think, are mostly on Alpena or all on Alpena?
That's correct.
Okay, so are those, are those considered a single unit in terms of rental?
Not three stories, no.
So someone could rent the living space and somebody different could rent the bottom floor?
Yes. Very common.
And if they rented the bottom floor on its own, they could only rent it as office or retail space?
No, they have the option, that's why it's called live work. You could live in, or you could work, you know, or, or you can run a shop out.
So the live work units could be two live live units?
I'm not sure I understand that, but they, they, they.
Okay, so I've got, I've got a, a two-story?
You got three stories.
Oh, no, but the live part of the live work is, is considered the two stories upstairs. And then the, the.
Yes, there's definitely no change, we're not gonna, we're not gonna rent the, the virtual space on the second floor.
All right, let me finish. So the top two floors would, in terms of live work, would definitely be the live space. And then the bottom floor could be either another living space or a workspace.
That's right.
And they'll be rented to two different people, or could be rented to two different people.
The, the bottom floor could be rented to a, a merchant and the second.
So yes, they could be, it could be rented, so it's not a true live work space, it's, it's apartments above first floor that could be apartments or a commercial space.
It's the, the, the live work was intended that the ground floor be optional. You could work there or you can live there on the ground floor. These are, these are studio spaces that work for small shop owners, or they work for someone at a studio apartment. It's, it's just entirely up to, uh, whether, how much demand, you know, we have.
So you could end up with more than two hundred and thirty-five dwellings?
No, there's only so much space on that.
Well, if, if all of the downstairs units were chosen to be live units rather than working units?
We could reduce them by fifteen percent or we could increase them by fifteen percent?
Okay, but wouldn't that, that would increase the number of residential units and decrease the?
Retail.
The retail space?
Yes.
Correct?
The way, the way this is set up now, we will meet the requirements of the retail space, we will meet the requirements of the, of, of the office space, and, and we will meet the requirements of, of the number of units, it's, it's very, very easy, it's not, uh, complicated.
I think there's a, I think there's already a difference of opinion of whether you're needing the, the, um, commercial space requirements. So, Commissioner May, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, but I, I have a comment too. So, so in, in all, in all previous, um, developments where we dealt with? So, so in, in all, in all previous developments where we dealt with live work, live work meant you rented it or you bought it, in cases of, of a couple of homes we have that are live work, you live in it and you work in it. So, so I, I never ever understood that to be either or. That, that, that is not really what live work is, is meant to be. The live work is meant to be, you, you work where you live. And, and not that, oh, well, this is live work, so you can either live in it or you can own it and transfer agency in it. Enough about that. I want to know why HUD, and this, I don't know if this question is for Eileen, or if it's for Mr. Heinzbottle. Why HUD requires for this development more parking than the city of Sanford requires? Why is that? Why does HUD have control over the parking in this development to the tune of ninety-six spaces? Especially when, when the city had already agreed to the parking requirements? Why then does HUD come in with seven, with ninety-six more spaces required?
Very often, financing agencies have their own criteria. Banks have their own criteria. And, and in this case, the development agreement was set up with, with the Schedule S that had one space per unit as, as its basic criteria. And, and we realized from having spoken to the banks and, and U S HUD as a good example, that it would be preferred to get one and a half units, one and a half cars per, per unit. And so we implemented the change. This was in discussion with staff the whole time.
In that, I just don't understand why, when you said HUD required it, why, why HUD? What, what is the reason that he used that one?
Because HUD was doing the financing.
Right.
And they're like, well, we think that if you're going to use our money to build apartments, those apartments are going to need to be, have one and a half units to be viable. And that was my interpretation when we had the conversation.
They'd want to make sure that they're.
They're trying to make sure there was enough parking, there's enough projects available, so they get their money back.
There's a whole planning philosophy that would say we should reduce them, right? But that's, that wasn't U S HUD's approach, and it wasn't the approach of, of any number of, of the banks that we spoke with, Paulson.
Well, there's a whole, whole philosophy, you know, I, I, not that, that I would begin to, to undertake this or do this, but there are, there are, there are people that say that the way in the future would be to make the entire downtown all walkable, no parking. So, you know, there's a whole lot of philosophies there. I just found it unusual that our parking requirement would be different than HUD's parking requirement. Unless you're good at.
If I may, put the chair. When this was being written, when the D A was being written, we recognized that one block was a historic, historically designated. And that it would automatically come under Schedule S because it was historically designated. And we realized that the consistency of doing it everything the same way made more sense. So, so it was written, the D A was written with the Schedule S parking code for the entire three blocks, even though only one was. And, 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 not to belabor this live work thing, but there's nothing that could stop a merchant who's, who's you know, living on the, or who's, who's got a shop on the ground floor from living up above his shop.
Understand that, but I thought that's what.
But you're renting them separately.
You're renting them separately. And live work, I thought, was all one unit.
What?
But after rented, this together?
Well, I just did a quick internet search and every definition of live work was, the same person who lives there works there.
Works there. That's the definition of live work. So all this time, you've been saying live work, I've been going under that definition. I did not know you meant that it was an optionable, optional, you're flexible.
These are flex units.
Flex units.
Those are.
Flex units, Patrick, because we don't know that we can possibly support all of that retail space. We know, we under shadow the doubt, that we can support all of the, all of the residential space. Those, those ground floor units as studios will rent a unit.
So, under the calculations of retail, commercial space and residential space, where do the live work units fall under more numbers?
The, the, the live work units now are shown on, on our drawings, all in green. There's a, on the side planes.
Where do you count that square footage? Do you count that under your residential numbers or your commercial?
That group is counted today under the residential numbers.
Okay.
So, Mr. Heinzbottle?
The, the, to, to the right of that, on Block Three, Patrick, you see the, there's a big area of red space. That's the commercial space. There are two thirty-foot wide buildings over there that are, that are, shall we say, live work. They have the apartments above. They have the, the retail space or workspace down below. Meant, meant for smaller merchants.
But when you say live, when you say live work, those spaces, those downstairs spaces are also available to be, to be residential, to be lived in.
Yes.
So what you could end up with is you could have, you could have someone on the bottom floor, residential, and right next door, you've got a little, you've got a unit being used for commercial use. And then next door to that, you've got somebody else trying to live, and then you've got someone else for commercial. You can have commercial, residential, commercial, residential, you know, right down, right down the line, right next to each other. Depending on that commercial use, that could be really detrimental to whoever was trying to live next door to them, correct? So I, I don't get it. Suppose I wanted to rent one and open a dog grooming shop. And I've got a woman with a brand new baby living right next door to me, and the baby's got to sleep, and people got to get their dogs groomed. I, I, I don't think that's a great plan at, at all for a development of this quality.
Some of the nicest residential streets I know, and I'm thinking of Boston, Massachusetts right now, have some of the nicest live work units where the entire ground floor, you know, is, is, is open for, for merchants. Folks don't seem to mind that, that, you know, but, but in our case, we want to encourage, we were, from the planning perspective, always encouraging retail to flow and grow down Palmetto. But there was no way that you could finance the project if you forced all of that to be, to be retail space. It's too much. The world can't handle that.
It's got to be either or. You, you, you can't expect to have someone, you know, someone moving into a ground floor residential that could potentially have a myriad of differences that's right next, right next. We don't allow it, we don't allow that in our, our single family development. We don't allow that in our high density develop. I, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand how, how that would work. I, I feel like that would be a, a problem.
I suggest how I might handle it as, as management of the, of the development. As we start out, this is going to be, those areas you see in, in green are going to be residential, but they're listed very deliberately as live work. So if the rest of the commercial becomes full, these annual leases for more commercial could, could be extended down Palmetto, which was the overall intent. When we started talking about this with, and planning it in the very, very beginning, to draw commercial customers down Palmetto towards the war. But we can't afford to do that now. So there's a, there's a link, there's a point at which it's too much. So we're only, we're only building fifteen percent less, or thereabouts, than what we were, than what we originally, than the forty-four thousand square feet that we originally proposed for commercial space. But in the future, Patty, there's the opportunity for, for if those commercial spaces are viable for us to, when the lease is up and those units on the ground floor are on the, you know, the Palmetto, we can convert groups of them at any time we, that makes sense. And it works for us too, because, when, it works for us simply because, oh, you can rent for.
I understand that. But Mr. Heinzbottle, that's still not addressing the, the, the original problem. You start renting these units out and you get, you get someone who wants to rent a ground floor apartment. Someone who wants to put a little insurance business in. Somebody who wants a ground floor apartment. Somebody who wants to have a dog grooming shop. It, 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 from the get-go, I, I, I don't care that it could be corrected down the road. I, I, from the get-go, that kind of a, that kind of mixed use does not, does, that kind of mixed use is not going to work.
And that's not what we're proposing. From the get-go, those are going to be studio apartments on the ground floor.
Okay, well, then that's completely not what was in the development agreement. That's not at all what was in the development agreement. So, so for each of the, the live work units, you're counting that as two residential units in your count. Is that correct?
No. I'm sorry.
Were you just at the bottom floor?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. There are three units in each one of those buildings that you see. Right? There's a studio on the lower level, and then there's a two-bedroom above and a two-bedroom above that. And they look like townhouses, right? If you looked at them, you'd say it's a, it's a, it's a townhouse. So what we're saying is.
So what, what we have always believed was a live work unit, one unit, with residential and work, is actually three separate units.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is three separate, it is three separate units, the ground floor of which, the ground floor of which is convertible to work. If.
Well, any apartment is convertible to workspace, in that sense.
But it's that flexibility on the.
With public access.
Okay, so essentially, in terms of unit types, we removed townhouses. Okay, right? And then labeled the buildings that are already there tranquil living. And we got rid of the work part of the live work units and made the apartment buildings with three floors of units.
That's not my interpretation, sir, but with all due respect.
Explain to me, explain to me where I'm wrong.
This is, these are flexible live work units by the common definition in planning terms.
Can I get to the first floor work unit from my second floor living unit without going outside?
There's nothing that says that has to be the case. The door is right next door. You go up the stairs. You want your.
Right thing to enter now.
You want to, you want to enter the same way? That answer is no. That's not a, that's not a criteria in the development agreement. There's nothing that says I have to design it that way. You don't know, I think it would be a good design. Could I put a door in that would allow them to do that? Yeah, I could. Yes, we could. We could put a door from the stairway that goes up into the work unit. Into the work space, into that ground floor space, and you could go directly without going outside getting.
I, I would like to find anyone but you that defines a live work unit as three separate living units on three separate floors.
There's nothing that said that they couldn't be through three, four, five floors. If this was another city with different typologies, we might have gone on five, on these side streets. What's wrong with a three-story unit, you know, that?
Because it's not a live work unit. It's not what was described to us. Any other questions? Okay, y'all have anything else?
Y'all just, the rule allows me to reply, so I'm trying to. Did you do?
Yeah.
Do you want, I still need to open it up for proper comments.
I, I, I need to ask, I need to ask, I need to ask our planning expert a question. Um, under planning terms, what is your interpretation of a live work space unit?
A live workspace, from everything I've known from planning terms, is as the mayor has described it. Where you live in a portion and can conduct your business on a portion.
Not completely separate rentable units. That's not live work.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
A more, a more appropriate definition, I think, would have been flexible live. You know, that we should know all along that it was intended to be flexible. Talking with townhomes, designed for people, like an architect, like a artist that wants, doesn't want to get up and drive to work, wants to get up and work in their, in their home in a separate space connected to their home.
That is the traditional understanding of a live workspace.
Thank you.
Eileen?
Yes, ma'am.
The letter that was written on July fifteenth, twenty twenty by A D D, is that a formal letter of approval?
It is not in a form that we would issue in a, myself personally with attorney consultation.
Right.
It would not be a formal approval.
Got you. I have one more question of clarification. When we were talking about the, the letter, just so I know what's what. Let me set it up for you. I'm going to be talking about the July fifteenth letter, item number four. And then on page six, in the agenda, item number two, okay? So I'll read them to you, but I just, I just want to make sure. Based on the above, and one of the above is sample waterfront partners in the city of three that revised site plan drawings, including the two hundred and thirty-five residential units and the thirty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-nine square feet of non-residential uses. In parentheses, a fourteen point six reduction in non-residential uses is within the fifteen percent allowance to increase and decrease as outlined in the D A approved by the city manager. Now, when I go to this, unless I'm looking at something wrong, which you can correct me, it says that the component of the proposed changes of the non-residential uses as set forth in the proposed site plan exceeds the fifteen percent threshold allocated to the developer applicant to seek without formal amendment to the D A in accordance with the processes mandated by controlling state law. So it doesn't read it. So are those the two same things or not?
Okay, the assessment from my review of the pieces of information, the assessment from Miss King, was that non-residential is one thing, which by their own master plan and their own site plan, is not one thing. It is broken into retail and restaurant, and it is broken into office. And each of those land uses can be modified by up to fifteen percent. Not the category as a whole in the case of the non-residential. Because the way it's broken down on both plans is that there is retail restaurant and there is office. Overall, that is not an incorrect statement. The modification of the overall land use of non-residential, if I remember the math correctly, does come out just under fifteen percent. However, the modification of the retail and restaurant alone is closer to twenty. So one of the land use categories to which they identify is far beyond the fifteen percent to which any staff member is permitted to approve without permission. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just wanting to do something.
I just want to sit down. You still need.
I just wanna sit down, you still need...
Actually, either you or Ms. Wardwell can probably answer this question. Amongst all of the, um, renderings that we have received in videos of the project, do we have anything that shows the live-work units on comment?
I can look. Um, I do know, and what I did find is we do have a rendering of that, of the tranquil living and what it is supposed to look like. Whatever happened. It would take some time to get it to, computer to get to you, but there is a rendering that shows what it was supposed to look like, um, from the slide street. And then as for, which one are we looking for?
Comment.
The, the work units. I can look and see if we have something.
I think I may have.
Because the master plan, we did not reproduce it because it's already in here as part of the appeals request, but that which was recorded by the clerk's office, San Antonio County clerk's office, a lot of it is illegible and hard to see because of the color renderings and when they're quoted in black and white, they're just very challenging to determine what's on them. The, um, colored renderings to which we have, which I used as part of the, um, presentation, are a little easier to see, but I didn't include everything because it is a lot of things. Um, there are some elements in the site plan that was provided to you in the comments, a schematic design that they submitted. Um, I don't know if that includes, I don't know if that includes the rendering or anything.
Okay. It's under my, looking at that light. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay, this is public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak? Step forward and say your name and address for the record.
Mary Snipes, four floors in yours, South Summerlin. Um, I do things at the senior center, which now seems to be right across from the pool, but I also like to go to things in the evening there, and just wondering, are we gonna have noise issues between the pool, community area, and our civic center? Which is our senior center. Just a thought. Also, I'm a little offended that you don't call her Commissioner Mahaney, sir. She deserves that respect. You are Commissioner Mahaney when you sit there to me. Also, I just, we are Stanford, we're not Boston, and I just spent three weeks in Europe, and that drawing I saw does not look like Europe. What it does remind me of though is, maybe I'll change that, the brutalism that we saw in Eastern Europe that was a communist design. It's not pretty. But I'm most worried about the noise between the pool and the civic center and, and offended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, once again Nancy Groves, one of the someone's not vote cabinet. Um, I also find it disrespectful, not just to Patty, but all the other commissioners as well, the justice commissioners. So, um, it bothered me. Um, I can't believe we're here again about this, and, um, I think that you should vote to deny, then deny, deny. I admire your connection, but it should be dead. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Are we allowed the applicant to close if you would like?
Thank you. I think it was 2018, the Florida, uh, state of Florida amended the Florida Constitution, um, Article Five, Section Twenty-One. In that amendment, it says that you, in your quasi-judicial seats, can't take staff's interpretation of any statute, or in this case, the D.A. You have to do an own de novo review and determine what it means. It sounds like you're doing that. Um, but when Ms. Henson was telling you that this, um, that the interpretation of the separate components of what the square footage is, that's the staff's interpretation, it's afforded no deference by this, by this panel, zero. And, um, when you look at the paragraph, which is in 4.6 of the D.A., it talks about uses separate from components. And on the contract instruction, that means that each one has to be afforded its own independent interpretation. You can't use them to mean the same thing. And so you have to make up...
Explain that to me.
Sure. I'm not gonna take Attorney Colbert's position. Suffice it to say...
All right, what, what section are you on?
4.6 of the D.A. But that, that's, that's really the, um, the changes to the site plan that are permissible based on flexibility. And that's really what this dispute comes down to. And, you know, I trust that, uh, I understand, based on how your, uh, questions were going, I understand how I think the panel is going. But I urge you to make your own independent determination about what the D.A. says, and then using, um, the evidence and the reliance by S.W.P. I would urge you to, um, either to not reverse the approval without instructions to, uh, I'm sorry, reverse the denial order without instructions to say it's approved, so that staff can work with S.W.P. to fix these issues that staff is apparently concerned with, but they didn't communicate to us. I respectfully request you to do that, and if you don't, I again urge the panel, um, to approve the waiver of the only limitations that S.W.P. considered provides plan if you would affirm the denial order. Thank you.
Right, I have a question.
Yes.
So under 4.6, changing of uses, the second sentence starts off, developer showing flexibility to change uses. You're saying the word uses there is not the three uses on the front of the master plan.
Can you read further in that paragraph, uh, there? It goes on, and it says, it talks about component uses later in that paragraph. So when you have uses in the same paragraph, and it's a list of things that you're delineating, and I'll leave it to Mr., Attorney Colbert, um, to advise the panel on the law, but my understanding of category contract construction, that those two have to have given meaning.
So use component is not the uses as defined in our code. They are residential and non-residential. What are you trying to explain?
My understanding as reading that paragraph is that uses are residential and non-residential. That's my understanding.
Okay. And... We have almost two pages of non-residential uses in our land development.
Okay.
So to me, uses are uses outlined in our land development.
Except, and what Ms. Henson said, is that these D.A. is really...
Right, if combined two of those uses, it's one paragraph.
Yeah, the D.A. is done.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And the D.A. has two different non-residential uses, correct?
I see it as a non-residential use that describes the specific types of facilities that have to be built, but they're all non-residential.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, close the public hearing. We bring in the commission for discussion. My fault process is I don't understand how we ever got to deny a development order, why the applicant didn't just come to commission to change, to ask to change of the development agreement. But I was also, you know, we had three letters from our attorneys from the applicant. That's numerous things, all of which I was ready to dispute. My favorite was from June twenty, June twenty-four, 2022, from the Gunster Alfront, so this would not be you. The city had no right to require them to amend the development agreement with conditions that prevent that they... And yeah, Mr. Heisen model about that development agreement, which the commission denied, I disagreed with the commission on that one, but that was the one with the Michael's organization, it was very confusing. And in email, said that, um, the city, Central Waterfront Parkers, and Michael's organization had all come to a good agreement that benefited all three organizations. So, you know, those are the kinds of conversations we have. I would certainly entertain going back and letting them propose some changes. I am just, I'm really thrown for a loop that the definition that is being used for live-work is not the definition that all of us have. Anyway, that's where I am at. Anyone else?
I would agree.
So what is...
I'm going to affirm the decision of the administrative official in the denial, uh, the denial of development order.
Okay, and...
Without the, um, the extension. The...
Let's see if there's a second, and then we'll talk.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Henson.
Yes. Okay.
Your second.
Okay, so if we just uphold the denial of development order, that precludes any submission of a new site plan, is that correct?
It doesn't preclude them from submitting a new site plan, but the new site plan has to be compliant with the D.A. They can't submit a new site plan that matches what you've just denied.
Can they come, can they follow the D.A. and come to the commission and say we'd like some changes?
They can come to the commission and ask some changes to the D.A., yes, based on the new site plan and the modifications shown in that master plan overlay. Like, the, the new layout they have, they can present it, and this commission obviously can make modifications to the development agreement. Or they can present to staff a new site plan that is compliant with the renderings that are part of the rest of the pool.
Okay, so I just wanna make, because I thought earlier there was a comment made, and I don't know if I do, that if we, um, the attorney's raising his hand, I was gonna help you. That if we just uphold the denial of development order, that prevents them from doing anything else for a year.
There are provisions in the land development regulations regarding zoning and rezoning that, um, require an applicant to wait a year to reapply. If that's part of this affirmation of the denial, um, the commission wants to ensure that... I'm, I'm not a hundred percent where in the code it is because we very rarely have it. Very rarely does anybody seek to wait that one year. In all the time I've been here, we've had it happen once. So if you wanna add a, as a condition, that no, no time period is required for them to come back and amend any, um, element of the development agreement.
That's, that's, I wanna make sure that if they want to, they can come to the commission to ask for a change to the development.
Okay.
You don't... Go ahead.
Attorney Groves.
Long Groves, you really don't need to, you really don't need to say that like you can, just to assure the, 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 the water parkers that they can submit a new site plan. Under the D.A., it's an iterative process, so they can continue to come in and, and say this conforms with the D.A. Make submissions without any waivers. They can, as you mentioned earlier, request an amendment to the D.A. with this through the process to amend the D.A. Or you can also just say, even if it did apply, we waive any, any delay in new application, which I think is what you're asking, just for assurance, is that correct? So after you vote on this motion, I think it would be pejorative to the applicant to make a motion to, if there is a conclusion to following a new application that is waived, and they can file a new application. Would that satisfy you?
Well, thank you, Ms. Groves.
I guess that would...
Well, can we just make that a part of this motion?
You can.
I would, I would, I would leave you wanting to amend the, the D.A. Why, why?
Because we still haven't agreed on it.
Right, I know, but I mean, we're not going to be in compliance with the original master plan. I don't, what I'm hearing is say that they can come before the commission and then we can change the, the development agreement to adhere to something that you didn't, that wasn't originally presented to us.
The, the issue is, the issue is substantial compliance. And that's what Ms. Henson found, is that the, the one that you're, the site plan that you're acting on now was not in substantial compliance. There could be a different site plan that does not match the master plan in the D.A., which is in substantial compliance with the master plan in the D.A. Does that make sense? But if it's, if it's beyond that, you have to amend the development agreement, so... Does that make sense?
Commissioner Britton, just, I guess what you're asking is, what would the benefit be to the city to change the development agreement as it was originally submitted? If those were the goals to which the commission was seeking. Yes, okay. So they can present modifications. The commission doesn't have to approve modifications. We've already, um, we've had multiple hearings and such that we've charged modifications to the agreement that we've worked through that got denied with the Michael's organization and related. So what you are providing them the opportunity is to present a plan. They've heard your voices today and what it is that you're looking for. If they do wanna make modifications, make changes that may be unpalatable, but not exactly the same as they originally were. They may be a better design, they may be something the commission wants to see. It's been a number of years, so changes may be beneficial. However, they can only do that if they address them to you.
Right, that's, that's sort of my point, is, yes.
So waive the...
You could not approve this.
I cannot approve changes to the development agreement.
I agree with you, you cannot approve this.
Correct. I can only make changes, I can only approve or deny in compliance with what this work has agreed to.
I'm not necessarily against more parking spaces. I, I recognize that there may be a need to reduce the amount of retail.
I just don't have the...
I do not, she does not have the authority to do that. Um, I don't agree with, you know, what he is saying would be the change for live-work, but I can see them presenting changes that, thanks to the project, still viable for us, anyway. But what I'm hearing is even if we don't make that motion, they can still do that. Right?
Per my supervision.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Mayor, before you all run, I just wanna be sure that we understand what the record is. The record, as I understand it, is the staff report and the exhibits attached to it, which the applicant... the applicant has had, and a recent, and I think it's probably already been looked at by staff, for a recent rendering, plus the, what I think has been identified as the views that were introduced tonight. Is there any other part of the record that I am missing? I want to be sure counsel, the new agreement, that constitutes the record for that.
The citizen has a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, PowerPoint. I thought it was something that was, thank you, sir. I agree, the PowerPoint should be part of.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, I think with Mr. Root, everything you've got is everything there is.
Yeah. Okay, we're in agreement. Thank you. I think we saved it, your deliberation.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask your man.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, just for clarification, if they wanted to submit, is there a time period that you're saying they must do it?
No.
That would have gone in the motion for me.
No, all we did was uphold per denial, which does not preclude them from following the DA to submit changes to the city, or to submit a site plan for review by the administrative official to decide if it's compliant. Is that not right?
What you said is correct, maybe, the record, you elected, affirm that. You understand that?
I understand.
Okay, approved.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
Before we move on, this is one part, you asked that question, and I'm wondering, was that even possible? Like, you just made me think about that, about how?
The attorney that asked that did not, that it'd be the one-year period. I just want to say there's a clarity from the commission to send the works on projects.
You did not change any timelines.
I believe, it all under. Right?
So it is clear that Sanford Works on Projects could submit something?
Yeah.
Right, that's my understanding.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Manager, I, my concern was, to extend the DA's contract zoning, that zoning lived at one year would preclude SWP from submitting anything for one year. And we clear that on the record, and I'm uncomfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to, otherwise, if there's a request to submit utilities, that, um, well, yes.
My other one?
S. recommend to the city commission approve, to reflect the city utilities, for most preschool and daycare, four thousand two, East State Road twenty-six, and S. recommended to the
Motion, second, for discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask your man.
Resolution coming on.
Okay. Resolution thirty-two forty-five.
Yes, we're in agreement with the commission. Uh, S. recommend to the commission approve, resolution thirty-two forty-five, for management to improve resolution of lending to transfer capital asset to Founder Street Management Company, and add the money to the Sanford Works Management Office, basically allowing them to use the vehicle.
Motion on thirty-two forty-five, would you approve? It says we're transferring funds. We're transferring funds to buy, and then we're transferring the vehicle to Founder Street. Why are we buying the truck?
We're buying.
Assistant City Manager, it's really all, we're buying the truck, but because Founders Three employees are operating the truck, there's a bit of a liability there, legal and risk management are comfortable with, uh, Founders Three employees operating the city vehicle, so we're going to transfer ownership of the vehicle to Founders Three, and if, uh, we need to take it back for other operational reasons, say we switch management company, then we take it back. So the funding part is just really a wash, you're not, we're paid for the truck wash, we've already paid for it.
I think your question is why aren't we telling Founders Three to buy the truck?
Yeah, but, I mean, they're getting paid to manage the marine.
I'm sorry, answer me.
What, why are we buying the truck?
Because it's our marina.
That they manage.
That they manage and get paid to manage if they need a truck to do their job, we shouldn't necessarily have to supply them a truck. We should have their own trucks to do the jobs that they contract to do.
We, we've already bought the truck. It's our capital asset right now.
It's like one of our assets for our marina, we have to trump out boat, we have some forecast, it's our asset.
The same thing as Mayfair, we have much equipment.
If they leave or grant, it's still our asset.
What we're encountering is, of the employees of Founders Three, we're using their private own vehicles to pick up supplies, uh, other things with their own personal vehicles, so the request was made two years ago, so we decided to pursue getting a truck for them so they could use it with their, for city business to pick up, um, items.
You mentioned liability, how does this, how does this make us free from liabilities?
Because if they're city employees, you know, the op.
And their insurance.
Their insurance is in pay.
I'm just telling you, it's our debt.
How do they insure a truck that we own?
Well, they're, they're going home.
That's why we're changing our memory. So we can take it back, how do we take it back?
Well, that is part of the amendment that's in here, is, is part of the management contract, is to say it's five, if we switch management company, then we'll take it back to you.
It reverts back.
But, but we're paying them to manage the marina.
Right.
And they essentially lack the equipment that they need to manage the marina if they lack a truck. So we're coming in and saying, well, we're going to pay you the same thing to manage the marina, but we're, we'll supply you the truck that you obviously can't supply for yourself, even though we're paying you, it doesn't make sense.
So you, you mentioned the golf course.
Correct.
You're telling me that Down-to-Earth doesn't use any down-to-earth vehicles to bring in anything to that golf course?
Same thing with the marina with the two forecuts we got there, we own the two forecuts to take the boats out, the raft, and provide the residence, and same thing, so.
Well, can you answer my question? Down-to-Earth doesn't use any of their corporate trucks?
They pay for everything. Mowers and everything, but they don't use trucks, all they do is.
Right, those are all our assets. Those are literally like our employees, you're, they're a management company to you, they serve you. You said, you pay for those employees, you pay for those activities, but we have the assets. We own the buildings, the grounds, the equipment. It's just this truck will be going on state roads, you know, and roads, we can't, you know, they have to be licensed, so the insurance was very, very complicated, we could not insure their employees.
This, this is what bothers me, with, 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 with the golf course, they're not technically driving the city vehicle home. I mean, how, who's going to monitor the usage of that truck? You know, is somebody going to be taking it home every night? Is somebody going to, somebody's kid going to get in it and drive it? I mean, I, this is a little bit crazy to me.
That's another main reason we, we want it on their insurance. So, but you can answer the question, is there any requirement that the truck stays on the marina property, except when it's being used? That the whole, one of the main reasons is to go get supplies for, like the ship store, et cetera, they have to go to Sam's Club or whatever, and instead of using their personal vehicle, they would be using an asset vehicle of the city, but it's their vehicle. But the question was about someone taking it home.
Will it remain at the marina and not working out is the question.
We, if the commission wants to do that, we can make that a rip line. But, you know, our fleet superintendent likes trucks to be driven often home, because they're made to be driven, and we've got a lot of vehicles to just sit, and sometimes that creates problems too.
Yeah, but when they're made to be driven and we encourage driving, they put more miles on, it costs the city more gas, I assume the city will be paying for the gas for this truck?
It comes out of Marina budget, so the Marina.
Comes out of the Marina budget for the gas, yeah, I'm telling y'all, I don't think I'm going to go for this.
I've got to have a look on my face, because I'm reconciling the forklift with the truck. What forklift is it licensed to drive on any?
Right, and it's used to lift the boats.
Neither of the golf carts.
So our agreement with the marina is we provide the capital equipment needed to run the moon.
That's correct.
Is that what's in our agreement with them?
That's correct.
Okay.
But they don't even have a vehicle to run to Sam's to pick up supplies. This is, this is, this is a little bit, this is a little bit to me, a little iffy, when, when Mr. Smith says, well, you know, it's going to be like we're going to Sam's, well, I'm sorry, you know, stop on your way to work. I, I, I don't.
So they manage Titusville and, and Halifax, and they do the same thing there, we check with them, and in fact, the city owns the vehicles over there. I've looked into this, and our legal risk management highly recommend that they take ownership of this.
They have a sweet deal.
How much?
How much do we have on here? Eight thousand a month.
Eight thousand dollars a month, aren't we? Ninety-six thousand each.
So we're comparing this to the golf course? Um, and I'm there more than most people on this side. Scotty doesn't have a truck that he goes to Sam's to pick up supplies for the golf course. Scotty uses his own vehicle.
I know this was a question that I'm writing, that came to you.
No, but, but if you're going to, if you're going to give me an apples-to-apples comparison, give me an apples-to-apples comparison. There's nothing at Mayfair that leaves that golf course that we provide.
He is correct about that.
He probably has a lot of things to do with it as well. I, the fertilizer, majority of the stuff.
When we should do that? Are we ready for a moment?
How often do they need to go somewhere?
To the Burger King?
For example, they're making those planters at the front entrance, they need to have some soil delivered, lumber, they need to pick up lumber and soil and everything like that, so they did that, projects like that, there's a lot of work that needs to be done out there.
Management company that doesn't even have one truck, I'm upset. I'm sorry.
It's a lot of different factors in it, I don't see the problem with there being a truck there and them using it, but for insurance purposes, I don't, I don't understand why.
Because they are not a FTE or employee of the city, and so risk managers, they cannot find a route to do.
They insurance off of us.
Right, so if we, if we can't insure it, then we shouldn't allow them to, to use the truck, because I, I don't get that whole purpose of.
We're, we're transferring. Transfer the ownership to them so they can insure it, under their insurance. That's correct. Makes sense to me.
I do appreciate it, it's a, these songs, it's a little less offensive.
So, so, um.
They have to spend their entire, they have to spend six months of work for these to buy.
Well, if they, I don't think they're going to work to do this either, right?
Right. Well, I think they can't do it in public after the fact.
Can you buy a truck for my neighbor's city's getting ready to date a party?
And just to, to make the decision easier for y'all, I talked to the fleet superintendent, this truck can be reallocated to another department, just in case you don't decide to go in, so we could use a truck, someone else.
How about, how about this idea? And, and, and listen, you know, in, in all seriousness, this is, this is a very serious question here. She, you know, I, I know that there have been several times that we've disagreed with you, one was when you wanted to buy a cart truck in conjunction with Lake Mary, and I always feel really bad having to, you know, be so negative, but, but I do want to ask you this, and, and I'm very serious about this. I don't understand why any management company that is big enough that they're managing other marinas decided to send for marina. And I do completely understand that why they, they need the forklifts, and I understand our equipment at the golf course, it does not leave the golf course, but I don't understand why this management company doesn't at least own one truck somewhere that they can pick up lumber and soil and groceries with. And I would ask you, in all seriousness, because I'm going to probably vote against this, is this, are we not better off, if they literally are that desperate for lumber, soil, and groceries, could we not have a city truck they call in once a week and say, I need this, this to be picked up, and every Monday we go out and do their pickup for them, wouldn't that cost us less money than giving us a truck, giving them a truck?
Well, we have, that takes our guys away from the, we're, we're.
So we're going to give them a truck.
Well, so, I think we provide a part, it was already mentioned, Commissioner, that troubles me even more, we've already purchased the truck.
Yeah, we've already bought it, now we're getting asked about it. How old is this truck, and how much did we pay for?
Probably about a month old.
A month old, is it twenty-four?
Thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. But we could use it in a four apartment, we guys just voted against it, we could use it in the city somewhere else.
New relations.
Bought it for this?
Yeah.
Without, without asking?
Without asking, yeah. Which part of the budget process do you think?
Was it, was it in last year's budget?
How many employees do they have? We have five that are part-time. What? At, at the marina, we have five in part-time. Five total employees over there? Two, three, we got Luke Bill and one part-time.
This right here.
So we, we pay the management company, manage the marina. I, I, I want to know, how many people they have stationed out there? We have five. Five?
They have five of their employees stationed out there. This right here is where I get concerned about taxpayer dollars, you know, we have spent taxpayer dollars on a lot of stuff, I don't think the taxpayers should have had to buy Founders Three that truck. I think if Founders Three doesn't have a truck, they need to find a way to get their own truck, they're making ninety-six thousand dollars a year managing the Sanford Marina.
I understand, but when I asked a question about why don't you guys have a truck, just because it's on Marina.
If, you're actually transferring assets as a wash, you're not giving them a truck, you're giving, you're actually putting an asset on the marina, that's what you're doing. You're just putting it in their name temporarily to cover their, their insurance and not ours. You can always get that asset back.
How much are we making? They're making, they're making eight thousand a month.
Right now, we, we're at about a hundred and forty thousand in the, in the positive, I believe it was.
What's the count?
How much are we making a month on that marina now?
About twenty to twenty-five thousand.
We're making twenty to twenty-five.
Right, and we only made like twenty-five thousand when we leased it, so your management companies are working, they're getting better improvements out there, Marina Mater is doing fantastic.
Does our contract say that we'll, what does our contract say? Does our contract with him say that we will provide him a truck?
It, it says they would operate our marina, it's up to you what you want to have on that marina.
I see, okay, so they'll operate, I guess, I guess that's a, that's.
I, I'm okay with it.
All right.
Move to approve.
On favor? Any opposed? Ask your man.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, man.
Do you realize there are two resolutions for that?
Oh, yeah, we need second, thirty-two forty-six. We got another motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Second, thirty-two forty-six. On favor? Any opposed? Ask your man, so thank you for keeping it straight.
Where's the, where's the second one?
It's on my, it's on my first line.
AC.
One with the budget amendment, one with the.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it's thirty-two forty-six.
We already did that.
Oh, we did. Thirty-two forty-eight.
We just did a budget amendment, but I thought he said it was in the budget already for last year. Did we just amend the budget?
You're moving, you're moving into a different account.
Okay.
Next item is the item that was discussed during the work session, that is, commission rules, for city commission, city, S. commission, doc, resolution number thirty-two forty-eight. And with the rules, it's the S. city commission.
I think you started on this one too.
Yeah.
I like the part where y'all aren't supposed to talk until I call them.
It's always been that way. I tried.
I, I don't like this, and after going through it tonight, I really don't like it. And I'm gonna need to see more reasons of why we have to do this. I need to see case law from our DCA. I need to see case law or law that says we need to do this. That, that was a horrible process.
Horrible.
And, um, I, I don't, I don't like it.
Um, I hear that you want to continue this item?
Yeah. Move to continue to, move to continue to December.
I didn't have a problem with it. I, I think it's confusing because we really don't understand it. But I do believe that if legal says that it's gonna help clear up some things in the future and that it benefits the city of Sanford, then I think we should get on board. I just don't understand it because it's brand new. But it's a lot of things that are brand new.
Okay. Commissioner Burton, I, I respect that. And so I will ask them to show us where we have been found to be negligent in court under the way we have been operating. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we don't want to be found negligent in court.
I agree, but I, so this, so.
I, I, I agree with you. Let's have them come, give us a better explanation of why and what the actual, um, case law is. But not necessarily that we've been bound up to.
Right.
Of it, right.
Part of what we fight every year here is changes in state law that are made because of issues in other parts of the state. But, uh, State Representative, State Senator from Miami is mad at a city in Miami and he goes to Tallahassee and he gets, gets a law passed of how operations have to happen at the city level. Um, I feel like that is the same thing that's happened here. There's case law from other areas of the state that, that operate differently than we have and operate differently than we do, but they've been found in fault, uh, by their operations. That doesn't mean our operations are bad. Does that make sense at all?
It does.
Okay. Would you like to have this a little work session?
Yes.
Yes. So did I hear a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
I said no.
For a month? Uh, August. Because we, we have, uh, one meeting in July, right?
Yeah, we have two in July.
Oh, we did.
You, you wanted two in July, Matt.
Okay.
You're missing out on your, uh, budget.
We do have a budget. Uh, so the second meeting in July.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ask you, ma'am, so we'll get a work session. Second meeting in July. So continuing, so you can do a work session before that. Uh, my question is, who would you want to work with? Between now and the, between this one and, yeah, second meeting in July. First meeting in July, have the work session.
That's fine.
All right, yeah. Uh, thirty-two, forty-nine. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, City staff has requested approval of resolution thirty-two, forty-nine for land budget amount fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars to increase the purchase order to RUTSCO, making the new toll nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars additional civil service, several engineering services, thirty-fourty. This is the one that gives me heartburn.
This gives me terrible heartburn. Terrible. I, I got off on this last night and I'm gonna get off on it again. I guess Chief McNeil, could you come down?
Oh, yes.
It's not this one.
He's gonna blame it on somebody else.
Yeah, it's not this one.
But I'm gonna have a conversation with this week.
Yes.
Chief, you know, we, we, we talked about this before and I, and, and I, I have yet much respect in you in the, of those faiths. And you, you're doing a wonderful job with our fire department. I just feel very strongly that a million dollars for, for engineering services to build that fire department is, is just exorbitant. And I feel like what's happening is, I, 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 you know, I, I had made a suggestion that, that, um, quite frankly, you know, rather than spend a million dollars, why couldn't we piggyback on? There are fire stations all over this country being built, all over this country being built. There are readily available plans for fire stations. Why we couldn't piggyback on, on, on another facility being built on another plan? I think this is an outrageous amount of money. I don't think it's you, but I do think that it is a, a, a misuse of, of government funds by these companies. I think, I think they say, ooh, ooh, municipality, city, money, money. You can't tell me if they were building the same structure in, in somebody's backyard that it would cost a million dollars in civil engineering. And I don't, I don't understand how it got this high. I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I really have a problem with this.
Okay, the ninety-three thousand is not for the station itself.
Right.
This is for the airport property. Um, remember, we are filling in a drainage, a dry pond area to build our station. And now the airport wants to, they want to have usable land and not dig another dry pond on their land. They want usable lands. So with that, they have to do a drainage project. So you're gonna see even more funds coming in here with that because they want it all to go underground and go off elsewhere. And Chris can talk more onto that.
But this, this is for the engineering, not the building.
This is, this is part of the drainage.
Is an architect with many disciplines. This is strictly a civil engineering portion of it. It is required because the site was relocated from the original site to another site. So there's a pro and a con to it. The con, of course, is a different way we have our outfall for drainage. That's the con. The pro of this is the site is actually the one that's much better for the fire station. So there are some changes there. We still need to do the stormwater. It's just a little different. We can't go through the Navy Canal. We've gotta go through a different system to be able to go through that, through the master system of the airport. That's the reason.
So when this fire station is built, the day it's opened, what will it cost us total? I'll, I'll.
Right now, we're at a GMP of nine, I believe.
Yeah, it's just on the nine, eight point nine.
Eight point nine million dollars.
Right, and remember, there's two types of stations. And I want to answer your first question. Can we piggyback? You can't stake all prohibits, four million dollars or above, you can't piggyback.
But piggybacking, I mean, couldn't we just get somebody else's plan?
You can't. That's, that's basically a reuse of piggyback if it's another system. You can't. It is also, it is also a totally different apple than oranges. This is a hardened station. Remember what we were talking about before versus a neighborhood station. Neighborhood station is not hardened. Meaning if a hurricane came, they would have to evacuate, lock the door. This one, they can stay. And it's also a four-base station. So stations have increased over time.
Aren't all of our stations hardened?
Uh, no, I don't.
All of ours are, yeah.
They all are.
Yeah, thirty-two and thirty-eight, we just.
You would be able to answer that.
Yeah.
That didn't used to be.
Yeah, they were.
Correct. Thirty-two and thirty-eight were not, but they are now. They're hardened.
And just, this just kills my soul.
Well, well, it's just like.
Right now, construction, we have a construction specialist in our, in the audience, and you're running about thirty-three percent increase in construction costs at this time.
Are you dumping this on Mr. Ruzzi?
I'm not. No, they have a lot of, they have a lot of expertise that we love to tap.
The golf course, man, I, you're not doing this, are you?
And the airport down here.
You are doing this too, I think.
Um, so he's gonna help us convince the airport to use it in their drainage service case.
So, so Commissioner Mahania, the rest of the story on this is this is just for engineering.
Right.
I know.
There is going to be cost for the actual moving of the stormwater off of the property.
Sure.
And it's estimated to be about a million dollars.
For engineering and construction of the pond.
And, and there's hopes, but there's no guarantees that the airport is going to.
Pay half of them? The airport has delivered a draft ILA to the city funding agreement. The, uh, we just received it and they are willing to put up a half million.
Half a million. I know the airport's gonna pay half, but this just, a million dollars for civil engineering just seems very, just seems exorbitant to me.
One other caveat is the thought process is through all of the potential development at the airport. They don't want to waste property on another one. So that's the other concern that you have.
I get it, I get it. It's just a darn lot of money.
I'm not as upset about this as I was about the thirty thousand dollars to design the inside. You're not good enough.
Okay.
I don't know about that.
Can we move on?
Nine million dollar fire department, somebody, but we need a motion. Move to approve.
Motion, uh, second. Second, on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask you, ma'am, so, resolution thirty-two, fifty. Yes, Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant City Commissioner, City staff is asking for approval of resolution thirty-two, fifty to amend the budget amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars for the replacement of two small patrol police, public units.
So how much are they each? Seventy thousand dollars each? Will you cost? Were they that much when we used sedan, sedans?
Yeah. Which boxes don't affect their prices.
But do we lease, what do we lease? We lease the non, unmarked?
Marked cars are a lease purchase. It's just a.
We're paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just to lease them?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Um, yes, about seventy thousand dollars for each of the cars to be outfitted completely with. That is everything inside of the vehicles, including the radios, the lights, and everything that's there. As far as lease is concerned, as, um, as Cindy kind of explained it before, some of this is kind of a lease where we ask for the one point four million for all of these nineteen cars that we're doing. Part of this, part of the lease program and part of it is for purchase. So it's a combination of both.
So these are being.
For purchase.
These are purchased?
Yes.
To replace ones we already have.
Replace two that were.
It's opposed to our annual outlay. To replace.
Isn't it more to the nature of the business, there's a lot of them get destroyed.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion, second. Any votes in session? On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask you, ma'am, so, thank you, Chief. Welcome to resolution thirty-two, fifty-one. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, City staff is asking for approval of resolution thirty-two, fifty-one to amend the budget amount of one hundred and twenty dollars and two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty dollars in the, for the building divisions, capital, and this is for design and the partial, the demolition of the great one areas, construction of new replacement offices that will help the building. This is coming from the building.
Any questions there?
Questions or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ask you, ma'am, unanimously, out on item, resolution thirty-two, fifty-two. Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant City Commissioner, City staff recommendation, City Commission, approve resolution thirty-two, fifty-two. The amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. The initiative to the public drivers, this is a, this is a, this is a common, 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 common situation. Kind of, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Question? Okay, so it says additionally, FDEP has requested that the city submit an evaluation conducted by a professional engineer of the entire collection transmission system and so on and so forth. How much has that done across us or can we do that in-house?
Hello, I'm Fred Johnson, Polo's Utility Director. Um, if you recall from the conversation that we had before regarding this, um, for the one-on-one meeting, this is something that actually, we got hit with this in twenty-twenty-two. So in twenty-twenty-two, uh, DEP gave us a fine for our transmission and collection system. As part of that consent order in twenty-twenty-two, they're required that we, um, submit an engineered, uh, plan on how we're gonna move forward, um, and, or an action plan, but also, um, a plan from the engineer. So what we're gonna do is, uh, basically take that same report, modify it, update it, and submit it. We don't have a cost on that yet, but as mentioned, this is something that, uh, was previously done only two years ago.
So they're gonna accept you taking an old plan and submitting it even though they, they say that it has to be conducted by a professional engineer?
And that's what we did before, and that was our issue with this particular consent order was that it felt like it was double jeopardy because we received a consent order in twenty-twenty-two. We were required to get an engineering, um, assessment of the system. Uh, we were required to submit an action plan, a five-year action plan, and how we were going to implement, um, or remedy the system. We did that and we're still within that five-year window because, like I said, we got it in twenty-twenty-two. And so we technically have three years on that five-year program. Um, so we haven't even gone through those yet and then we got hit with another one for the exact same issue, which is the collection system.
I don't think they see it as a double, double jeopardy, Mr. Johnson, because we, I mean, we did violate. I mean, we did have additional spills and, and whatnot. I don't see it as, as, as double jeopardy, as something that really needs to stop. But my, we don't have a number of how much the engineer is gonna cost us.
We do not. But like I said, we're gonna take the same plan, modify it, update it, um, and submit it. And yes, they were the same spills, but it's the same. Collection system itself hasn't changed, um, except for the improvements that we've done in the last two years.
Okay, and I read somewhere that, that this has to be done by July first. Now it says, please review this document and by July first, return the signed copy to the department. So we don't have to have the engineering and all of that stuff by July first, just the agreement signed by July first.
That's right.
Okay, and I think I already know this question, but just for those who are listening, where is this one hundred and twenty-seven thousand coming from?
All of the capital accounts or capital equipment. We'll transfer it to operating for the.
Anything else? Any motion?
Someone?
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ask you, ma'am, so, city attorney comments? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have no additional items. City clerks report?
I have nothing.
City manager?
No additional items to say.
I have one request to speak to the Commissioner, uh, Mr. Kurchoff. Finally, your turn. Now approach. That one? Don't trip. But you have some other ones here. Mr. Kurchoff.
I have.
Mr. Kurchoff. Mr. Kurchoff. You got two, you brought two sets of papers up. Is this the one you're looking for?
Oh, I want, now you have one. Well, it's enough for everybody too. I want to have yours on appealing to the Sanford City Commission. On behalf of all. On behalf of all the property on twenty-five sixteen Sanford Avenue. Background is that the tenant had two trailers situated behind the restaurant, Angels Restaurant. One was a five-win barbecue mess, and it, and it was, and the other was a semi-trailer. A bedroom was sleeping in the barbecue, and a neighbor complaining. The barbecue was removed to resolve the problem. Somehow code, code enforcement said the semi-trailer had to go. Nobody was sleeping in it, it was secure. He was, Tony was storing kitchen equipment, stainless steel, this and all that kind of stuff that they have in kitchens. We pointed out that it was an allowable use in this zoning category. Code enforcement insisted it go. We finally got to the check of planning where they said it was an allowable use. The process went on for several months. We were cited for non-compliance in front of the magistrate. Because of questions involved, the hearings were continued month to month. Even though code enforcement knew the semi-trailer was allowed, they decided to press on the case. In September the fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two, the matter came up at a hearing before the magistrate. She decided because of recommendation of code enforcement to impose a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars a day until the semi-trailer was removed. The notice of the hearing was signed by the code enforcement secretary on the same day. In other words, we didn't have a notice of the hearing. There was no way we could be at the hearing because it wasn't noticed in the same day. We did not receive any notice of the hearing until two letters arrived. One certified, one regular, that's the standard way. The date stamped on the envelopes was October the third. Now, this meeting that they're talking about was September the fourteenth. We didn't get notice of it in the mail until the seventh of October, which is twenty-three days after the hearing. The notice of the fine was also dated October the third. We received that on October the fifth. So we received the notice of the fine two days before we received the notice of the meeting. Since we're not notified until weeks after the hearing, we have no way of attending and defending ourselves in front of the magistrate. Had to turn the page over because of the fact that we're saving paper. We decided to solve the issue by removing the semi-trailer. It took longer than anticipated to find somebody who would drag it out of there and take it away. We think that finding citizens without giving them a chance to appear before the hearing is not fair. We removed the trailers, both of them, to solve the problem. We're asking the City Commission to pass a motion to order the city to remove the lien of twenty-five thousand dollars on our property. Thank you.
Um, you say, had you been to any of the hearings before the one that was on September fourteen?
Wait a minute, what?
Had you been to any of the hearings before the one on September fourteen?
Yes, the, the hearings were going on. I, Tony attended some of them, he was, he was main one who was, because it was his trailer. And I attended some of them, yes.
Okay, so so likely you would have known that it was continued to the next month? Would you have known that it was continued to the next month if you had been at the hearing?
Well, I didn't understand.
Would you have known the hearing was continued to the following month if you had been at the hearing, the previous month's hearing?
No, we, we, we didn't get a notice of this hearing.
But had you been at the meeting where they continued it to the next meeting?
I wasn't at the meeting, the previous meeting. Was Tony, apparently? I, I don't think I was at the previous meeting. The, the notice for this meeting didn't go out until the fourteenth. So there's no way I would know that this meeting was being held. Because the, the notice of the meeting didn't go out until the fourteenth.
All right.
Of, of a meeting that was held on the fourteenth.
Is there a process where, because I, I mean, I'm not comfortable making a decision based on this. I would like staff to have an opportunity to present this to us.
Here you come.
I met with Mr. Kurchoff, and I saw where my concerns were. I did see the envelopes where it showed that the, the dates and when the letter was sent out. I also met with Mr. Ramondo and Angela regarding the same incident. My only concern is, if you're just looking at it legally, the notices were after the, the date. That's the only thing, is if you're looking at what was sent out. Now, I, it, that he had gotten the, the information before or attended the other meeting, yes, but when I sat there with him and I, he actually had the notices and the dates and the letters, that's where.
I've seen those too. But, but in making a decision, I think we need staff to present us the the timeline, and let us know what to do. For this.
If you look on the second page of the, um, of the order, sending the note of that order, if you look on the second page, you see that the, that Angela Atkins certified that she sent it by U.S. mail on the fourteenth of September.
It's a matter of accusations about staff. Fairness, Mr. Kurchoff, as well as to you and the audience, I would ask that staff be able to provide a response, and Tony and Angela can see what they'd like to say.
Okay. We're going to have, um, Mr. Ramondo. Um, be quiet for a moment.
But the lien is no longer twenty-five thousand, right? The, the lien isn't twenty-five thousand, you're gonna.
That is the total, if you're going to pay the total amount, we still, uh, when the property's in compliance, there's no cross-attachment eligible for the lien amnesty program. Again, for the record, Tony Ramondo, Development Services. Um, for the record, I think Cliff's version of the summary is everything that Mr. Kurchoff represented is true. Uh, with respect to the trailer, I would point out that it was in the swale or retention area behind Angels that, uh, was meant to manage water. And, uh, that was my primary concern with the, uh, the semi-trailer at the time. Um, it is true that the magistrate was late getting some of the notices back to us, which is the one in question. However, to your point here, your question was apropos, and that was that in all the previous hearings and attended by Tony, um, notice of those, um, uh, hearings were given thirty, sometimes sixty days in advance. So there were, there was plenty of notice, and additional to all the notice that happened at those hearings, um, there was communications at the code enforcement, and then with Mr. Kurchoff, you know, I spoke again with Tony from Angels, um, communicating those dates pretty clearly. And then finally, um, when Mr. Kurchoff had relayed his concerns to me, uh, what we did, we did have, we had no obligation to do so. We upheld timelines and run its course. We gave an additional hearing, just to be sure. We, uh, we brought Mr. Kurchoff's case back before the magistrate again and, and reserved everything just to make sure that due process was served. The magistrate heard that case, ruled on the case, and provided the detailed summary finding in favor of the city. And, uh, and so that's where we stood on it. So it's my recommendation that the fine be.
But he's eligible for amnesty, correct?
That's correct, that's been communicated as well. And what would amnesty be? Uh, so it's, it's fifty percent of the total worth, maximum of five thousand dollars with a four hundred dollar administrative fee. And frankly, uh, Tony came down to pay. Tony, uh, the, the controller of Angels came down and, uh, was communicating to us that he was told not to by Mr. Kurchoff, and he's going to resolve it in this manner. Uh, so, you know, the property is eligible unless I've missed something. Ms. Atkins, do you, is there any cross-attachment properties that you know?
No, not at this time.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, and the, and the twenty-one days um, delay in getting the order was, would be fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars. So it, it's still at a run for still those equal twenty-five thousand. Yeah.
I'm, I, I'm not following the math that Tony and, um, there.
Well, his, his, his comment was that they received those twenty-one days after the hearing. So even if they had gotten it in a time, in a timely manner, they were aware of it the day of, that still would only reduce it fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Lean amnesty reduces it more than that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. What do y'all want to do? I mean, the, the amnesty is.
They need us to, uh, reduces it, uh.
Lean amnesty reduces it to fifty, fifty-two fifty?
No.
Fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-four hundred.
And that's how everyone else is treated?
Yep.
It was a hundred days. Yeah. So, so track twenty-one of that, you're about a day. Still be wanting the amnesty. Okay. Mr. Kurchoff, we think you should take the lien amnesty program.
What?
The lien amnesty program. And have it reduced to five thousand dollars.
The lien amnesty program doesn't reduce twenty-five thousand to five thousand dollars?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Five thousand dollars, well, five thousand four hundred.
So due process doesn't, doesn't matter, is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, well, that's what I'm looking at, is that the hearing was not a, was not a legal hearing because whenever you have a gentleman here who's a process server, and due process says, is you have to have notice, and we didn't have adequate notice of the hearing where the fine was imposed. So if it was a, it was a legal notice and it was in the paper, and there was something wrong, that's not a correct legal notice, you have to re-advertise and so forth. And that's what you're, you're, you should be looking at, is whether the notice is legal. And when the notice is a fourteen, and the hearing is on the fourteen, it's not a legal notice.
Okay, well, the other, the other thing I'm willing to do is reduce it by the twenty-one days that, that you had not received the notice, which would reduce it by fifty-two fifty. Lean amnesty would be an utter deal.
If, if we had been, had adequate notice of the meeting, we could have presented things and so forth, and maybe the fine would not have been imposed in the first place if we had adequate notice to be there at the meeting. It was our right to be at the meeting, it was a right of any citizen to be at the meeting, but there was not enough notice for, for any citizen other than us or us to be at the meeting.
But you did have, you did have a meeting to present your side, and you were ruled against.
What's that?
You did have a meeting eventually, and you were ruled against, correct?
That was, that was something that Mr. Group, uh, thought up. I didn't ask for that meeting.
But you did have that.
He, he said they're going to have this meeting, and the magistrate at the meeting said, why are we here? I'm going to rule like I did before. She did not read what I had at the meeting and my evidence or anything, she just.
Okay.
That's what she said.
So the mayor said that we, he, he would agree to giving you credit for the twenty-one days, so that still leaves you seventy-nine days, Mr. Kurchoff. So you didn't know twenty-one days, okay, but you had seventy-nine days after that.
We were, we were talking to planning and zoning about the, whether the, whether the trailer could stay there. There were details that we were, we were talking about at the time. And that's why we didn't, and, and as I said, then after, we decided that it was hopeless to talk to anybody. It took time to find somebody who would take the trailer.
Fine, tonight, that is all we can do for you. Tonight, that's all we can do.
Does that mean tomorrow we do something different? What does that mean, tonight?
Okay, so that is all we can do, is offer the lien amnesty.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who should speak to the commission?
Joseph Princeiprey, on fourteen-seventy West Twenty-Fifth Street, apartment two oh five in Sanford. Whenever I see like injustice happening, I feel like, like I absolutely have to speak out on it, like, because that's the right thing to do, even if it's difficult or inconvenient for me to do. And this involves me and them. Other people, including women. I'm not going to mention the names of anybody or any businesses or anything involved, but I'll provide those details to City Commissioners after the meeting. This is a matter that, um, like, that's of concern to the community because it involves, uh, someone, who's a longtime staff member and pillar of the community at an otherwise peaceful and, and progressive downtown Sanford establishment. And he's a very large, muscular, aggressive, alpha male. But he's violent and unstable and, um, like, he's, he's been everything, um, aggressive and, and illiterate and demeaning and discriminatory and buried and terrorized and me and other patrons and staff members, including a female who is my friend, and who is, like, no taller than five-thirty and, um, obviously a lot smaller than this large muscular aggressive alpha male. And, um, the staff said demands to get this guy fired and bought from the property were met with, um, basically just prioritizing then maintaining the status quo over the safety of patrons and employees and protecting people's human rights. When I, when I went into this establishment, um, I was confronted by this guy who, like, I didn't even know was a staff member, um, I just thought he was a patriot. He was falsely claiming to be the owner, and I knew this was false because I actually know the owner of this establishment. And he was asking if I was okay, which was ironic because he seemed like he was, um, intoxicated under alcohol and drugs and was acting very unstable. And, and then I was like, yeah, I'm fine. And then he's like, I'm the owner of this establishment, you're not allowed back here. And I was like, don't. And I was like, don't play that with me because I know the owner of this establishment. So I went to take a seat at the bar and then he picks up a chair and convincingly acts like he's going to throw it at me. And, um, all the while, he's, um, alternating between saying, you're beautiful and, um, I'm going to censor out language here, I'm going to blank your blank up. And then a bartender asks him to leave after he sees this. Um, and I just want to point out that, um, the whole time that this is going on, even though the bartenders are like repeatedly asking this guy to leave, um, nothing happens. And, but they don't call the cops or, and, and even want to actually enforce that. And even though he poses a threat to safety, a threat to people there as well. And then this guy followed me into the bathroom and I went there to hide from him and then he's pounding on the door. I tell him to get away from me and then he's like, dude, you're going to get blanked now. And then when he finally leaves the bathroom, I go out and then I'm thinking he's gone, he's still there and then I have to hide behind the bar. Um, like, uh, because I see this guy and like that's the only place where, um, like, um, where, like, I feel like somewhat protected from it, like you know that's an employees-only area. And like, I know the people who work at this place, so like they would have been there still, like glad I was doing that. And then when the staff members end up escorting me to safety while the other two are trying to kick it out, um, including my, um, my friend, who's a woman, and then this woman, um-
I need you, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, um, yeah, so but this woman's asking him to go and then he's yelling and screaming in her face and, um, calling her the C-word and the W-word. And, um, and then he's going around the bar like smearing her, basically, and then like finally he ends up beating, like the, the owner and, uh, but the, the ending for him, the the fight, that's basically met with what the excuse was, although we depend on him for the yen. Um, to keep the picture running. So instead of hiring somebody who, um, is respectful towards um, human rights and makes employees and patrons feel comfortable, they basically just want to maintain the status quo despite supposedly being progressive and human rights champions. And I just want to note that I have asked for the instructions of former autism, which makes this even more of a human rights issue. Like how is, um, keeping this guy who's done all these things that I described, being progressive or a human rights champion? Um, I think that's, um, that's all.
Okay, I would say if this, when this happens again, someone should call the police and have it addressed.
Okay.
Alright.
I, I felt like, um, it was worthy of public attention, also if there's anything the city could do, like, like say like, um, if there's a violation of liquor laws or whatever, like maybe they have the liquor license taken away, but I don't know. I just thought it needed to be addressed somehow. And like, when I see unjust things happening like that, I feel compelled to speak out because I thought I would work for myself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I totally understand what you're saying. Can I make you one other suggestion? Is that, is that sometimes the absolute best thing that you can do to get a point across is to not, not go there. And so if you and your-
I am very proud of this establishment, I forgot to mention that.
Oh, good, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
But if you ever feel in danger, you know to call nine-one-one immediately, right?
Yeah, this is more to stick up for, um, like other people who go there who may be in danger of this guy and also my friends who are still working there.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience who should speak to the commission? Okay, we'll close with citizens' comment, Commissioner Breton again.
You know what? I'm going to let you go.
Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Austin. Mr. Mahain.
And I have something important, and I'll make it quick. Everybody look this way. Look this way. So you know I've been saving up my, my, uh, my, my little pot of money to spend on
It's not your pot of money, it's society's money.
Something for a public purchase, well, I know that, or our city, my, my pot of money that I, thank you, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Public art enriches everyone. Public art commission's done a fantastic job in gorgeous public art all over this city. This, my friends, if you haven't seen it, is what's going to go on the rotunda, the front of City Hall. It's huge. It's lit from behind. It says Sanford. It's of a postcard style. You can see that it has things that depict Sanford, but progressive things moving forward. We're not using celery, we're not using horse-drawn carriages. We do have oranges, we do have the Beechey, we have the clock. Um, anyway, it's beautiful and I would like to be able to spend, uh, uh, the, the Public Art Commission has some money in their budget for this, although not enough. And I would like to be able to, um, expend ten thousand dollars of that fund um, on this particular project, which is going to be done and held in a safe place until three models done and then the artist will come and be here for the installation. It's lit from behind, this little wave is actually part of it, so, and it's huge. And for anybody in the audience, I can pass this around. It's really beautiful. It says Sanford. Took us a long time to decide on the con, to decide on the images. This is Kirksees. Kirksees is an artist up north. We've got a couple of other Kirksees pieces. This is what the Public Art Commission has been doing.
Is that a motion?
It, it, since, um, uh, she was about to make one.
I would approve the ten thousand dollars out of the commission fund for District Four
Yes, ma'am.
For a public purpose.
For a public-
Any discussion?
No.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Ask your man.
Thank you very much. Um, I believe that this was the invoice that, uh, Lisa gave me. Would you hand it down to him? It says invoice. Lisa, Lisa said that's the invoice for when you presented. Does that look appropriate?
I'm going to give five minutes, see if there are any questions. Alright, we are in there.
Thank you, Mr. Motor Park. Thank you, everybody.